Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist, offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has on our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth in the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry. Serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations. Grassi Septic Solutions. Whole Health Company, LLC. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road. The Annie Hart Cool Team. Dolpi Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning. Village Lamp and Repair Shop. Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum. FriendsOfNobbska.org. Lisa Peterson Azendorf. Kinland Grover Real Estate. The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000. Wacoit Congregational Church. Sora's Flower Garden Nursery. M. Duffney Builders. Danny's Barber Shop. Carl F. Cabosa Excavating. Paul's Precision Automotive Repair. David Rogers Electric. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990. The Davy Tree Expert Company. Chapman Funerals and Cremations. Hanush Jewelers in downtown Falmouth. Mahoney's Garden Center. The Cape Cod Five. Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank, in Falmouth and Woods Hole. And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More. Additional support provided by Stop &amp; Shop. Windfall. Roach Brothers.
Good evening and welcome to the Spring Annual Town Meeting. Again, tonight, we will be utilizing, obviously, our Zoom platform here for an electronic virtual meeting. And then we will reconvene in person up at Falmouth High School in June to deal with articles that we are not dealing with at this town meeting. And I'll explain that in a little bit, once we get the preliminaries done. So, good evening and welcome to the Spring Annual Town Meeting. Tonight, your view may be different than on other Zoom meetings that you've attended. The technical limitations of the Zoom webinar prevent us from showing all town meeting members on the video, while also allowing them to vote. Town meeting members will see and hear me and any individual recognized by the moderator to speak. You will not see yourself or other town meeting members on the video, except when an individual has been recognized by the moderator to speak. Before we get to the substance of the Town Meeting warrant, a few words on how the virtual meeting will be conducted. Town meeting members who want to speak should use the Raise Hand function at the bottom toolbar to be recognized by the moderator. The moderator and others assisting with the meeting will see a list of individuals in the order in which the hands were raised. When the moderator recognizes you by name to speak, there will be a short delay while you're being moved into the Zoom meeting video by our IT department. When you see yourself appear on the screen, please unmute yourself by clicking the microphone button at the bottom left of your screen and identify yourself by name and precinct. Town meeting members who wish to make a point of order should use the Question and Answer function on the bottom toolbar by typing "point of order" or just PO in the question and answer field. A staff member will inform the moderator that you have a point of order, and the moderator will call on you to speak, and you'll be brought into the video. The question and answer function may only be used for point of order. Town meeting members will vote by using a poll window that will magically appear on your screen when I call for a vote. Please vote as soon as you can, and I'll give you a warning before the poll closes. Now hopefully you have a pencil and paper, so you can write down a phone number that we're going to use in case you're having any technical difficulties during the meeting. You all can also send a live email to our IT department during the meeting. That email address is virtuetownmeeting@falmouthma.gov. The phone number for assistance is 774-212-7400. Members of the public are able to watch the town meeting on FCTV Channel 15, as they'll be broadcasting live again tonight. The first order of business needed at Town Meeting will be to establish the quorum. After we establish the quorum, under statute, we will then take a vote to continue to conduct this meeting virtually. So at this point, we're going to do our quorum. IT, would you please put up a poll for the Town Meeting members to establish a quorum? You should now have a pop-up screen on your device that says " attendance," are you present? Please click "yes," and then hit "submit." All Town Meeting members present, please click "yes," and then hit "submit." Okay, we're about ready to close the quorum, so if you haven't voted yet, here's your last chance. Vote "yes" and hit "submit." IT, could you give me the results of the quorum call? By a counted vote of 188 members, we have a quorum, and I call this Town Meeting into session. Now, the first order of business is for us to take the statutory vote to continue to conduct the meeting on the virtual platform. IT, would you please put up the question for the members? You should now have a pop-up window that says "vote to continue Town Meeting via Zoom." And this is your choice, yes or no, and then hit "submit." Again, all Town Meeting members, please vote to continue the meeting, yes or no, and then hit "submit." Okay, I think we're ready to close the poll, IT, on continuing on the virtual platform. By a counted vote of 189 in favor and five opposed, we have the required majority vote to continue the meeting. At this point, if we could clear the poll result there, thank you. IT, could you bring over Andy Dufrain? He has his hand up? Andy, are you there? IT, I see that Andy was moved on the platform, but I don't see him in my view here. Is he with us?
It might be taking a moment longer for him to join. Do you want me to watch for him to bring back if he comes back?
Oh, I see connecting to audio now. There he is. We can also clear the poll result from the screen. Andy, if you could turn your mic on? Andy, you need to unmute your microphone? IT, could you unmute Andy, please?
I have sent a prompt to his screen, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I guess you all on television and on Zoom are hearing the cooling fan that's running on my surface. Sorry about that, but I can't shut the fan off. Hopefully it'll cool down and the fan will stop. All right, Andy, can you hear me? Okay, IT, would you bring over Ann Connolly, please?
Um, I was just trying to tell you about the funny noise. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the fan just came on, the cooling fan.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. There's not much I can do. I'm surprised you did it last time.
Thank you.
IT, could you bring Sandy Cuney over, please?
Yeah, Dave. For some reason.
Sandy, you've got the volume on, the microphone on. There you go. Now, you're muted now, Sandy.
For some reason, my father's iPad will not allow him to stop the video. So... Or he got the wrong number.
Well, he was in, but his microphone was off.
I know. It won't unmute. For some reason, his iPad won't allow him to speak.
Okay, why don't you have him leave the Zoom and re-log in?
Okay.
And then if it's still a problem, why don't you give a call to 774?
212?
774.
Okay, so I can tell you real quick what his question is. He wants to know if you are allowed to remove your mask. That was what he wants to know.
I am not.
Can you remove your mask?
I am not. I am in a room with other people.
Okay, that was the question.
Yeah.
So you answered it.
Trust me, I love you. My glasses keep steaming up, and I can't even see the screen, but...
I know, I know. So he was feeling bad about it.
That was my reason.
Okay, you're good.
David, Mr. Moderator?
Megan?
Could you just let folks know, I see that they've just turned on, and maybe this will help, Mr. Dufrain? They've turned on the caption on the bottom, so if it's difficult for Andy to hear because of the muffle, there is a closed caption at the bottom, Mr. Dufrain, that might help a little bit.
Yeah, I just saw that pop up online.
Yes.
Thank you. Although I'm noticing it doesn't come up on the television screen. It does come up on our Zoom screen. Okay, so at this time, we are going to have the presentation of the colors. And it's actually going to be done by the Falmouth Police Department, because this is the 100th anniversary of the Falmouth Police Department. At the Town Meeting in 1921, Article 25, which I'm going to briefly read, created our police department to see if the town will vote to employ day and night police officers with motorcycles, or to accept the provisions of Chapter 42 of the General Laws as amended, providing for a police department for the town, or do or take any other action for police protective purposes and make the necessary appropriations, therefore, on petition of the Board of Trade, which is now the Chamber of Commerce. Voted that the town accept Chapter 41 of the General Laws and establish a police department under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, and that the sum of $5,200 be appropriated to provide for a night police officer the year-round and other needed police protection in the regulation of automobile traffic. So our police department budget was less than what it costs to buy an 800-megahertz radio today for the police department. So in honor of 100th anniversary, would IT please have the Falmouth Police Department present the colors? Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you to the Falmouth Police Department for the presentation of the colors. And the chief wanted me to let everyone know that once our COVID restrictions are loosened, that we will have some ceremonies and we will be having some events to honor the 100th anniversary of our police department. And I also have a copy of the 1921 report that shows that the actual budget was only $4,000, even though we appropriated $5,200. At this point... At this point, we'll have the singing of "America the Beautiful." At this point, I'll recognize the town clerk for our invocation.
Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how to communicate, how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask you watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Okay, so what we're going to do tonight, um, i- is a little different, uh, than the initial, um, email or letter that came out to all town meeting members. We're, we're going to simplify the process a little bit. We're going to take, uh, two votes at the beginning. The first vote will be a motion from the Finance Committee for our Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar will include all of the articles that have been placed on the special town meeting warrant for June. The motion will be for us to take no action on all of these articles at this meeting so that we can deal with them in person at the June meeting. And the reason that we're using the motion to take no action is so that there's no prejudice against zoning articles, which cannot come back to a town meeting without the positive vote of the planning board for two years. So instead of indefinitely postponing, we will take a motion to take no action on the Consent Calendar articles. So, Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the main motion on the Consent Calendar.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to take no action on Articles 2, Articles 17 through 36, and Articles 38 through 40 as the official action of this town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So these articles, again, have all been placed on the special town meeting warrant for the June meeting, and there they will be available for debate and vote at that time. So IT, if we could have a, uh, a motion, uh, excuse me, a poll to accept the Consent Calendar. These are Articles 2, Articles 17 through 36, and Articles 38 through 40. You should now have the poll in front of you, which is to approve the Consent Calendar to take no action on the articles that will be before the June special town meeting. IT, is the, is the sound the same or worse from the fan at this point?
Mr. Moderator, it started off slightly worse, but now it sounds much better.
Okay, we have an external fan at the end of the table trying to cool down this whole area. So see if we can get the... The fan just, the fan actually just went off on the computer because of the external fan. But I want to make sure the external fan isn't louder than the internal fan.
No, it sounds much better, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, great, thank you. Hopefully that'll, that'll keep it from heating up. Okay, town meeting members, the last chance, if you haven't voted yet, this is the Consent Calendar to take no action on Articles 2, 17 through 36, and Articles 38 through 40. Either vote yes or no, and then hit submit. Okay, IT, if you could have the results of the Consent Calendar vote. By a counted vote of 201 in favor and three opposed, the Consent Calendar passes, and the articles listed will have no action. At this time, I'd like to dispense with the reading of the rest of the warrant. Madam Chairman, for the main motion. Madam Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, for the motion to dispense with the reading of the rest of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, so move. I'm having some issues with my technology.
Okay, no problem. We have the motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed no. The ayes have it, we'll dispense with the reading of the warrant. Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record, except for the officer's return. And at this point, I'll read the officer's return. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summon the inhabitants of the town of Falmouth qualified to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and in every precinct in the town, signed by Constable Ron Braga. Okay, what we're going to do now is we're going to use the blanket vote on the articles that were not dispensed during the Consent Calendar. And so Article 1 is a hold automatically because it is a, uh, the Finance Committee appointments. If you want to hold any of these other articles, you use the raise hand function to hold an article. I see hands going up, but I've already held the first one. I, I'm a little confused why people are raising hands because we have already held that article. Is it Article 3 that someone wants to hold? Article 3, to fix the salaries of elected officials. Mr. Netto, IT, would you please bring Mr. Netto over so I can make sure that this is a hold?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I'd like to hold Article 3, please.
Okay, Article 3 is a hold. Article 4 is a hold, it's the budget. Article 5, to raise and appropriate $1,032,079 and transfer into the Capital Stabil- Improvement Stabilization Fund. It's Article 5. IT, could you bring Mr. Scherer over, please? Mr. Scherer?
I'm, I'm here. My, my computer's not doing. I would like to hold all articles in this warrant and not go through this. We had a, a precinct five and six meeting that was a very, oh, what, confusing and...
Okay, we'll do it, we'll do it. Mr. Scherer, we're all set. We're holding them all. We're going to go to Article 1. Article 1, to choose all necessary town officers for the year in accordance with nominations offered at town meeting. At this point, I'll put in nomination for the Finance Committee. Susan Smith, Mary Harris, James Newman, Joseph Lemay. Those four candidates are currently on the Finance Committee and seeking reappointment. And Timothy Gordon. For a one-year, unexpired term, Eileen Miskel. If any town meeting members would like to change any of the members in nomination, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we will take a vote to accept the slated nomination. IT, would you please put up a poll to accept the six nominees to the Finance Committee?
One moment, Mr. Moderator, I just have to type that out.
At this time, it would be an opportunity for me and the town to thank Wendy Vogel for her years of service on the Finance Committee and for her years of service as Chair of the Finance Committee. Uh, Wendy, uh, has asked to not seek reappointment at this time, uh, and that is what the extra, uh, slot was, uh, for the five year, uh, excuse me, for the three-year term. So Wendy, thank you for your service to the town, both as, uh, Chair a- and also as a member for, for a period, a good period of time. Thank you very much. Town meeting members should now have a poll up to vote to approve the appointments to the Finance Committee. Click either yes or no, and then hit submit. Again, all those approving of the appointments, signified by voting yes, those opposed vote no, and then hit submit. Okay, we're going to close out the poll for the Finance Committee appointments. IT, could you give me the results of the poll? By a vote of 201 in favor and one opposed, the Finance Committee appointments are accepted. Article 3, Article 3 is to fix the salaries of elected officials. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the main motion. Sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move that all articles that have been passed not held, being hereby adopted.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, we, we, we're not going to...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, we're not doing the... Mr. Scherer was, wanted to hold every article, so we're just going to do them individually.
So you just want to do the, uh, motion for this particular article?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, that the town vote, Article 3 as printed. Article 3 as printed. Uh, Mr. Netto wanted to speak on this article. IT, if we could bring over Mr. Netto. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Moderator? I'd like to amend Article 3 to read moderator's stipend to be $2,000. The, um, unbudgeted money to come from certified free cash, the $500 to raise it to $2,000 annually from certified free cash. That's my amendment to Article 3.
So, so Mr. Netto, with all due respect, um, I would have to step down with this amendment, and I don't have anybody in this room to run the meeting, so I'm going to deem your amendment out of order. But I thank you, uh, for the concept of the amendment, but I'm going to deem any change of my salary in the upward position, um, as out of order at this time, because I do not have someone to hand the gavel to.
Would we be able, Mr. Moderator, to do this then in the, uh, June meeting when we're live, so to speak?
No, it would have to be next year because you s- you fix the salary, you appropriate in the budget to fix the salary annually per the town charter in this article, so.
I should have seen Mr. Palmer earlier then. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further discussion on fixing the salaries of elected officials? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as printed. IT, if you could put up a... Uh, one moment, the poll results. Okay, so I have, uh, it's not really a point of order, it's a question about the poll results. So the poll results, um, as I mentioned in the last meeting, they will come up on your screen as a percentage. They come up on my screen as a hard number, and that's why I announce the number, uh, after each vote. Um, because the technology, for some reason, doesn't allow the hard number to come up, uh, to attendees. It comes up in the panelist view. So, well, you'll see percentages. Now, I will give you the hard numbers, uh, for each roll call vote that happens. So at this point, IT, if you could put up the poll for Article 3 as printed. The poll is up, you click yes or no, and then hit submit. This is to fix the salaries of elected officials. Okay, vote yes or no to approve as printed Article 3, and then hit submit. IT, I think we're ready to close the poll on Article 3. By a counted vote of 205 in favor and zero opposed, Article 3 passes. Article 4, this is the town budget. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, um, I recommend that the fiscal year 22, 2022 operating budget, uh... be voted as printed.
Okay, as printed, this is the center section of your warrant, the yellow pages. We will begin with a presentation on the budget. And then, as I normally do, I'll go by category within the budget, and if you have a question or you want to make an amendment, you would raise your hand in the raise hand function, and then I will stop in that section. And will either get your question answered, or you can make an amendment, and then we'll go on to the next section. So, at this point, I'll recognize Jennifer Mullin, our Finance Director, for a presentation on the budget.
Good evening. Thomas, could you cue the budget for me? Presentation? Thank you. So, um you know, just a little update on our FY21 projected reduced, we had reduced revenues significantly for the FY21 budget. And they were stronger than what was anticipated, which was really good news. State aid ended up being level funded. Free cash declined a little bit, but it wasn't as catastrophic as it could have been. Next slide, please. We are projecting somewhat of an economic recovery in FY22. We've projected an increase in local receipts, but it's back to pre-pandemic levels only because we significantly decreased our local receipts in FY21. And we can project level funding and state aid for FY22 through the governor has proposed his budget, and actually, there was a consent very recently with the legislature to keep the governor's budget. You know, the numbers around the governor's budget may be a little bit higher. Next slide, please. We're resuming funding. If you remember last year, because of the reduced revenues, we didn't fund our capital stabilization or other post-employment benefits trust fund, but we will resume that this year for FY22. Next slide, please. And here are the amounts that are in our stabilization funds as of this year. Next slide, please. So, you know, let me get back to, it wouldn't be a budget presentation unless I said reoccurring revenues fund reoccurring expenses. For, we use property taxes, state aid, estimated local receipts, and other available funds to fund our budget. And our one-time revenues, such as free cash and reserves, fund one-time expenses. Next slide, please. We have a revenue policy that is in our financial policies, and the board of, the select board votes a budget policy every year. I explain the four reoccurring revenue sources. Property taxes represent 76% of the total budget. And we have our limits, our increases due to proposition two and a half. We can only increase our taxes by two and a half percent every year without an override. Next slide, please. And the major line items that make up estimated local receipts are motor vehicle excise, hotel motel, and meals. And then our departmental revenues, you know, water and soil receipts, beach parking receipts, licenses and permits, building permits, ambulance, special assessment and investment income. Next slide, please. As I said, we significantly decreased our estimated receipts in FY21, and so you will see an increase in FY22. Next slide, please. And in FY20, again, I'm just demonstrating around what we had funded in FY20, and we're back to that in FY22. Next slide, please. And what makes up our other available funds are our parking meter funds, embarkation fees, wetlands and waterways, our energy receipts, golf revenues, community preservation, bond premiums, and debt stabilization. Next slide, please. Our property taxes, we take the two and a half percent levy capacity. We are estimating new growth at 700,000, which we have done in the last few years, and it's been coming in a little bit higher than that. And we will be maximizing our debt drop-off, which we do every year. Next slide, please. And this shows you a little bit of the pie chart of, you know, how the revenue is allocated, and you can see just by visually, just visually see that the majority of our revenue is from property taxes. Next slide, please. We have an appropriation policy that is in line with, it's the select board's budget policy, and this budget is consistent with that, and we also have reserve accounts. Next slide, please. So we've had our budget increases, I've incorporated the override into the operating budget, so we have 160,000 increase in health insurance. This year, we've actually kept it level funded. We do have some excess funds in there. We're looking at an increase in health insurance, about 2%, but we can definitely handle that. The retirement assessment has gone up 7.42%. Again, we've incorporated the override, the portion of the override for retirement assessment into the retirement assessment part of the budget. The school department has grown 2.49%, and the upper Cape Votech is 6.33%. So those are our major increases in our operating budget. Next slide, please. So our budget increases, we only have one new position in this budget. It's a full-time clerk in the town clerk's office. We have incorporated the housing coordinator. That was paid from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that was funded by the CPC. And that was for three years, so that now is being incorporated into our operating budget through the general fund, so that's why you see a large increase in the select board's budget line item. And also, we have the halftime diversity officer. The other half will be in this, is in the school budget. Two police officers last year. We've increased them, we had them higher as of January 1st, so we had six months in the budget. This year, we'll have the 12 months. The same thing with two firefighters. And we also have an adjusted wage schedule for AFME and seasonal employees, and that's why you might see a larger increase from FY21 to FY22 in the salary portion of the budget. Next slide, please. And so this is the allocation of expenses for visual purposes of what I just discussed by function. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we are projecting an economic recovery this summer. We always have to fund our fixed cost increases. The budget still allows for flexibility, which is needed. And we do continue to implementation of further explanation of the departmental reorganization and cost-saving measures. So thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. At this point, I'd like to see if there's any general questions before we start category by category. IT, if you could bring over Amy Leonardi.
Amy Leonardi, Precinct Eight. Jennifer, can you just explain, I was looking at the beach department, salaries and wages going up about $50,000. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, yes, the beach department, they have increased, we did increase the wage scale a little bit. And we adjusted the, so we've adjusted the wage scale, the seasonal and temporary wage scale, because we wanna keep it in line with minimum wage, even though we're not mandated to offer minimum wage, but we always wanna do that. So that was part of the increase in that, and we also have some steps in there as well. So that's, it's a large salary department, so that is the increase in the beach department.
Okay, IT, if you could bring over Sheri White.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Sheri White, Precinct Eight. I'm just wondering in general about free cash that was mentioned, you know, how much of that is available? I know a lot of our articles mention taking money out of free cash, so where that comes from and how that's available, how much is available?
Sure. Just note, we are not using, we do not use free cash to fund the operating budget, so that's not part of Article Four of what we're discussing right now. But in general, what our free cash is, is, so when we propose a budget, so I'm proposing, you know, we're recommending the FY22 budget, we have, we estimate our receipts, and it's all in your warrant booklet, you can see it in the back when you have the budget overview. So we estimate our, say, local receipts. And any funds that come in over our estimates in any budget, part of a budget that hasn't been spent, you know, your excess becomes part of free cash the next year. The Department of Revenue reviews our financial statements and certifies our free cash. It's really our surplus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other general questions before we go section by section? Okay, then we'll start with the sections. Section One, Town Meeting. Section Two, Selectment, Town Manager. Finance Department. Finance Committee. Town Accountant. Assessing. Town Treasurer Collector. Town Council. Personnel Department. Information Technology. Geographical Information Systems. Mr. Donahue. IT, if you could bring over Mr. Donahue.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Right. My question is, is this seems to be a one-person department. Why, why is that, and who does he report to? And it looks to me like it would be better if that would be under consolidated communications or information technology, the one above it? I, I don't understand how you have a one-man department. Who, as I say, again, who does he report to? If he reports to somebody in some other department other than our town manager? And I don't think our town manager would have a clue probably of what is involved in what he does, so...
Okay, Ms. Mullin?
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, I hate to give the answer, we've always voted it separately, but there is one person in that department, the GIS department. He does report to the IT Director. It's always been separate. We have been, I will say, with the Finance Committee, we have been asking to consolidate some line items and combine some departments, you know, in the warrant booklet, but this just didn't come up this year.
Well, I'd recommend it comes up next year. It's kind, it just doesn't look right. Thank you very much.
I'm sure the Finance Committee will take note of that.
Peter, did you wanna add to that? I saw your video was on there for a moment.
No, thank you, all set.
Okay. Town Clerk. Elections. Conservation Department. Planning Department. Zoning Appeals. Building Department. Health Department. Police Department. IT, if you could bring over Carol Murphy, please. Ms. Murphy, if you could unmute your microphone, please.
Hello, Mr. Moderator, thank you for recognizing me. Carol Murphy, Precinct Nine. I would like to know if the Police Department is having any kind of mitigation resources in their budget for some type of a social worker? Every report that seems to come out of the police briefs in the newspaper has a Narcan, an overdose, or substance abuse. I would like to know if there is anything in the Police Department that is gonna include a social worker or something that can meet these needs?
We have the chief with us. Chief Dunn?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. We've been work, what we do is we work with Human Services and Department of Mental Health, and we go out and we, and we deal with that with our offices, but to have someone in the Police Department right at this moment, no. Not like we have with our domestic violence. But it's something that we are looking at in conversations with the town manager.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask, when is a position going to be made available for the Police Department to have such a person to go out with the police officers to these places where these people, these poor individuals are being housed?
Whoever wants to address that, if you could just turn your video on from our group? Mr. Sousa?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. As the chief has indicated, they work hand in glove with our Human Services Department, which consists of several licensed social workers, and they routinely follow up on locations where there are drug or abuse-related problems. There's a follow-up with the family and with selected officers in the Police Department. So it's been an excellent partnership, and should we identify a need for standalone social workers in the Police Department itself, that would be pursued. At this point, the partnership has been very successful, and, and I tip my hat to the chief and our Human Services Director, Susie Hauptman, for the close cooperation and coordination, because this town is frankly is ahead of the curve for most departments that have not been actively working with social workers. That has been the case here for several years.
And we, and we do that with both addiction and mental health.
But again, is there a position going to be made available within the Police Department to assist you when you have these types of calls with the Narcan and the Fire Department and the paramedics?
As I said, Carol, those are things that we've been talking about in the future, if we can get enough officers on board. We've trained the entire Department of Mental Health First Aid. We have offices that are specially trained in a 40-hour course, and Susie Hauptman, and working with Mark Abbott, going out weekly to deal with these situations. But as far as the actual position in the Police Department, right at the moment, there's not one.
I just wish that something could be made in the next budget, maybe 2021, for that position to be made available, Chief, it would be most helpful.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay, IT, next on my list is Dale Cap.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I have a question regarding the other expenses. I see that it's gone up by 77K this year, and first, I have no idea what the other expenses cover, and second... cover, and second, why such, to me, a large increase. Thank you. Are they not hearing me?
So the, so the increase here on other expenses is from 503,000 to 508,000.
It went from 503 to 580.
No, 580 was the request. That's not what you're voting on. You're voting on the finance committee's recommendation, which is 508,013.
I, I do see that. Thank you very much. Could I get a quick idea of what the other expenses are?
Ms. Mullen?
Sure. Other expenses are operating expenses, so they're, you know, you have utilities in there, you also have uniform allowance, you have, I can pull up my budget book, there's a whole litany of line items, you know, office supplies, supplies for the police department, you know, expenses that has the police department operating that aren't salaries, but there's, there's, oh, you know, there's a lot of line items.
Okay, thank you for that. I get the idea. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, IT, next on my list is Judith Fenwick.
Okay. Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1. We got a little further along before I realized that something seemed to be missing towards the beginning of the budget, and that was, it used to be a standalone budget item for the affirmative action officer, and I'm wondering where the diversity and inclusion officer is in this budget.
Jennifer?
Yes, it is in the selectmen town manager budget. When you see the large increase in salaries, part of that is the diversity officer.
And a reason why it's no longer a standalone item?
Well, it's, will be a position, any type of positions that will be reporting, this position, I believe, will be reporting to the town manager and the, in the superintendent. So we incorporated half of it under the town manager's budget, and then half of it under the superintendent's budget. It was originally funded as a separate town meeting warrant article.
Okay, thank you.
IT, next on my list is Mr. Donahue.
Hello?
Yeah.
Can you hear me, Ms. Moderator?
Yes, yes, I can hear you.
I, I have a question through you to the chief. I feel that the police department is something that we all folks don't realize, the emotional turmoil that these offices go through on a monthly, daily basis. And is there any places that they can go without permission of the chief? I don't think the chief should be involved or anyone else in the department, any officer, where they can go and talk to somebody with some assurance that it would be private and, and would get help if they need help. I think it's a critical thing today. These men and women are under unusual strain every single minute, and it's just not the job that I used to do 30 or 40 years ago, and I'm just, I'm really scared for the town that somebody will crack and something bad will happen. So I think they need to have someone to go to. Thank you very much.
Okay, Chief Dunn?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Donahue, through you, Mr. Moderator. Yeah, we do have some programs that are available to our offices, and we are also, I am also very concerned with the mental health and wellness of the offices. There's the employee assistance program in town that they can go to if they feel, there's cards around the building, there's signs around the building, there's phone numbers they can call, and we also have our police chaplain that has made herself available to all the offices, and it's all confidential.
Thank you.
Okay, Fire Department. IT, if you could bring over Mr. Dinen.
Okay, Phil Dinen, Precinct 5. This is a question of the Fire Department was brought up at our precinct meeting, and Chief Fifth came in and, and gave us an answer. I'd just like to expand on it, and my concern is currently we're spending about $900,000 in overtime for men staffed the department, and probably 14 men per shift, two men per apparatus. And like I said, with this summer is going to be very big, I think, on the Cape down here in Falmouth, and with the lack to maintain the West Falmouth Firehouse, and I don't know if the firefighters ever get a vacation in the summer. If we had an opportunity, once all firefighters have had the opportunity to work as much overtime as they want, to go outside of the department to fill openings, to keep everything running as far as opening, as far as West Falmouth for safety reasons. I know there's union considerations, but if, if everything's been used as far as the number of hours they've worked and vacations required, I wonder if that's an opportunity that the town could do that. Yes, that, I don't know if the chief's on it, you can expand on that.
Chief, there we go. Chief?
Good evening. To answer that question, to have any outside personnel working on our department would be impractical since we'd have to train them on our equipment. It's, it's, and again, it's, it's not practical to do that, to bring outside resources into staff on a daily basis, especially with the amount of training that our firefighter is currently, you know, undergo. Also, it's a safety issue, working with people that have not worked here before, and again, you know, utilization of equipment and working with personnel that have, were unaware of their skills and such. So it's not something that I don't believe we've entertained in the past. We utilize our personnel, and we'll continue to utilize our personnel to staff our department.
Oh, Chief, it's mandatory overtime if there's not enough people, the staff, the 14 per shift?
Correct.
Do the firefighters have vacations in the summer?
Yes.
They do, okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Marine and Environmental Services. Facilities Maintenance. IT, if you could bring over Michael Duffey, please. Yep.
Yes, thank you, Michael Duffey, Precinct 6. My question was relative to dredging, and I don't know if it's an item that's in other expenses in the marine and environmental budget. I have a keen interest in making sure that we both re-nourish our beaches and dredge our harbors, and I see the beach re-nourishment all be at light, but I don't see anything for dredging. Could somebody help me with that?
Sure, I can do that. Dredging is voted at the annual town meeting in November as part of the non-capital, so that's where the large amount of, amount, amounts of money for dredging are. I know that we have a very good balance in our dredging account right now for, because of the timing and permitting, so we will be budgeting, you know, and requesting more money next November for dredging. It's not in the operating budget.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Facilities Maintenance. Snow and Ice Control. Street Lighting. Bike Ways Committee. Fleet Services. Waste Management Facility. Solid Waste Collection. Renewable Energy. Education, School Department. IT, if you could bring over Ms. Welch. And then I have Mr. Murphy on our side next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't think it's going to require an amendment or a change, but I just want to make sure that town meeting members have the most accurate information before they vote. So as you know, if you've looked at our budget book, it's like this thick and has hundreds and hundreds of line items, and we actually, the school department has the ability to move money between those lines, so the breakdown in our budget book here doesn't particularly matter because the final number, that bottom number, is the most important one, and that's the, the money that we are allocated and we can move around between lines if necessary. But the numbers that appear on 184 and 185 are a little bit different, and I just didn't want town meeting to not have the most accurate information, so I'd like to give those numbers. So for line 184, it's 42,173,302. So it's 42173302. And then line 185, instead of 10 million even, should be 9,341,427. So 9341427.
So, Mr. Duffy, do we need an amendment for that on those particular line items?
And I had brought it up in the precinct meeting, and Jennifer Mullen thought we did not, so I wasn't worried about it ahead of time.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Mullen.
Yeah, so the school department has line item autonomy, so they move money within line items, so even moving the money around from salaries expenses does not matter, because even though we budget that amount for salaries, or, you know, we tell you what is salaries and what is expenses, it usually goes over and under, and then they just move it around, so I believe they don't need an amendment because they don't have to stick to those respective line items.
Mr. Duffy, do you concur?
I agree, we concur with that. That's what I would have said if I had the chance.
Thank you, and I know it doesn't seem significant, but, you know, the school committee always wants town meeting to have the best information, so I just wanted to share the actual correct numbers.
So I have a question for the town, either, either Finance Department or the town manager. Can you tell me why these numbers weren't accurate based on what the school committee had proposed?
Usually, we get the money, I mean, we get the breakdown from the school department, and it might have, you know, I, I can look through emails to see if we got it, but we wanted to make sure that, I always want to make sure the bottom line is correct. Plus, there was some, what happened was during the budget process, we were originally going to take $500,000 from the stabilization, the special ed stabilization fund, but when the governor level funded state aid, you know, we had to change again, so it might have got lost in there. But usually, we get the numbers from the, you know, the school department, we put those numbers in there, and we'll just make sure that, you know, we double-check them again next year.
So Ms. Welch, did you all provide these numbers to the town side?
You know, it very well may have just been a clerical mistake, as you can see, it carries over from the, the first line, you know, and I, I don't actually have, I'm not sure how that mixed up, but I think it's more important that we just have it correct now, and, you know, we'll be sure to make sure it's correct in the future.
Okay. I concur. Let's make sure it's correct in the future. Either go to one line item or get the line items accurate so that our town meeting members know what they are. So I don't know if this was on the school side or the town side, but it better be fixed in the next budget, whoever didn't do it correctly. Upper Cape Vocational.
It may well fall into the category that Ms. Mullen mentioned earlier, where there's some consolidation moving forward, since it's not particularly relevant.
Then that's fine, then it'll be one number that will be accurate for our town meeting members, and that's what I would expect us to have, an accurate.
Which is why I brought it up.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and we'll, we'll find out why it wasn't accurate as we move forward. Upper Cape Vocational School. Veteran Services. IT, if you could bring over Ms. Peterson, please.
Hi, Laura Peterson, Precinct 3. Most of the numbers in the budget all seem to go together, and so that's why this struck me. Under Grave Maintenance, 199, the request was for $3,200, and the amount recommended is $1,200, and I was just curious, because that's a big percentage, so I was curious about that. What's not going to get done?
That's, yeah, there was a request in, in the Veterans Budget to increase it, but we also have trust funds that you don't see here that we use for grave maintenance, and I don't know if that was, so that's what we're using in order to supplement that difference. He wanted it in the operating budget, but we have other funds that we use to do that.
Okay, as long as it's going to get done, that's, that was my biggest concern. Thank you.
We have our veteran service officer, Mr. Lincoln.
Hello, it's Don Lincoln.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, we had talked about that earlier. It, it, it doesn't matter, we still get the amount of equipment that we need, we get the amount of maintenance completed, everything's done. Jen explained to me that I was asking for something I shouldn't be asking for, so I, you know, went back and fixed it.
IT, our next one on Veteran Services is Deb Aguirre. Ms. Aguirre, I see you're unmuted. Can you hear me? No, you just muted yourself. You, you were unmuted. Ms. Aguirre, I need you to unmute your microphone. IT, are you able to override the mute for Ms. Aguirre? IT, are you able to override the mute for Ms. Aguirre?
I can send a prompt to her, Mr. Moderator, but that is as far as it goes.
She just unmuted again. Go ahead, Ms. Aguirre. I'm wondering if she's on a device that doesn't have a microphone. Ms. Aguirre, if you can hear me, hit your raise hand function, please. Okay, so Ms. Aguirre, it appears that you don't have a working microphone on your device because you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to allow you, since I know you're over here and recognized already, if you'd like to type your question into the Q and A at the bottom, and then I'll read it to our Veterans Officer for answering it. If you just go down to the bottom to the Q and A and type in your question.
Mr. Moderator, she could call me tomorrow and I can answer any question she has also.
The only issue would be if it's an amendment. But if it's a question, that would, that would work out well. Thank you, Mr. Lincoln. So Ms. Aguirre, I'm not sure if you're actually typing a question in Q and A. So could you hit the raise hand function again to take your hand down? Okay, I'm not exactly sure what's happening here, so we're going to have to move on. Ms. Aguirre, I'm going to give you the phone number again if you want to call into IT and let them know what question you have or if you were trying to make a motion here. The phone number to talk to IT is seven-seven-four-two-one-two-seven-four-zero-zero. Any further questions or discussion on Veterans Services? IT, if you could bring over Mr. Nolan.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go.
Hi, I hit my raise hand button just a little too early. But my question is one of, where do we cover the expenses for maintaining the cemetery off Mill Street that the town is responsible for? I don't see a line item for that anywhere. I was just curious.
That's under, that's under Grave Maintenance. And we have a couple of, the, under the other expenses, if we need to go into that, we'll go into that. But annually, we get flags. We get about fourteen hundred flags and we get the medallions. And then Boy Scouts go out on Flag Duty Day and they put the medallions and the flags in there. And we cover every one of the cemeteries in Falmouth. But if you see a problem and we're not covering them, you should let us know.
But my problem was basically the whole cemetery, not just the Veterans portion and the flags and whatnot. Just the maintenance of the cemetery has really fallen into disrepair, just off Mill Street.
Okay, that's, that's, I'm not responsible for the maintenance of the cemetery.
Right. Again, my question came a little premature. Just on the Veterans section, it was under Community Services. I thought there should be a line item that would cover maintaining that cemetery.
Can someone address Mr. Nolan's issue of where the maintenance of that cemetery appears in the budget? Mr. McConerty?
Yes, good evening. Actually, I joined in exactly the same time as that Park Superintendent joined in. I didn't catch what cemetery that, which cemetery that was.
Right off Mill Street? At the end of Mill Street and Woods Hole Road?
Yep. Our Parks Department does the maintenance on that. They do the cutting and pruning and clearing on that lot.
Okay. It's not a separate line item?
It's under the Parks Department, under the Park...
Okay.
Mr. Pearson, would you like to add to that as well?
Yes, can you see me?
Yep, I can see you and hear you.
Yeah, so like Mr. McConaty said, that does fall under us. We don't have a particular line item for it. It just falls under groundkeeping. But if, we have been working more diligently on maintaining those cemeteries. And actually, if you've been there in the past couple of weeks, we just did a massive overhaul of that. And we are working harder at maintaining those cemeteries to better care.
Okay.
All right?
All right. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If we're done with that question, we did get a telephone call from Ms. Aguilar and we have her question that we can relay.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so her question was in line 201. What are the Veterans' ordinary benefits that are addressed there? And I know Don Lincoln can speak to that.
Yes, that's the Chapter 115. That's stipend that we have for the citizens of the, citizen veterans of the Town of Falmouth. That's the same one that we receive seventy-five percent back of the money that we put out to the, to the veterans. That's the short answer. I hope it's good.
Peter?
Part B of the question, she was concerned, Ms. Aguilar was concerned, is that enough funding to support the need? And I believe Mr. Lincoln can confirm that that is actually an entitlement. So the veterans receive what they are entitled to. And if there is a reimbursement from the state and if more town funds are needed, we find a way to supplement the budget.
That's correct. That is correct.
Okay, great. Thanks, Ms. Aguirre. I'm glad you were able to call in and get your question answered. Any further discussion on Veteran Services? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lincoln. Human Services. IT, if you could bring over Sandra Famon Silva, please. Ms. Famon Silva.
Hello. I don't see myself, but, oh, yes, I do. Here I am. Thanks, sorry. Good evening, Sandra Famon Silva, Precinct Two. And I'm just wanting to call the community's attention to the amount of this budget, half a million, as compared to the police budget, which is almost seven million. And we did just have a conversation about the desperate need for social services for so many of the policing activities. Is there a way that the town can work on using the expertise of Falmouth Human Services? These are the experts in working with, with people with psychological problems and with drug addiction problems. How can we increase this budget so that it can truly be the, a budget that would serve the needs of our vulnerable residents in town that are seen by the police, but they really need to be seen by the Social Services Department?
Do we have someone that wants to address Ms. Famon Silva's question? You can just turn on your, there we go. Mr. Johnson, stop.
I would just, you know, we did address this topic to some extent when we were discussing the police budget. I just wanted to mention for context that most communities our size and certainly smaller than the Town of Falmouth have a budget of zero for Human Services. I was pleasantly surprised by the robust Human Services Department and budget that we have here. And as was noted, there is a terrific, very close working collaboration between the Human Services Department and the Police Department. And I would welcome, if Susie Hauptman wants to add anything to that, I would welcome the opportunity for her to speak as well.
Ms. Hauptman?
Good evening. Yes, I'm Susie Hauptman, the Department Director for Human Services. And I would reiterate what Peter said, that compared with other communities, we do have a, you know, a robust staffing. But given the nature of the work that we do, it's always a challenge to meet some of the issues that emerge. However, we do meet regularly with other town departments, school department, police department, health department, rec department, et cetera. And we're in very frequent communication with, with those departments when issues emerge. I'd also say that we work very closely with a lot of our other community nonprofit agencies. We certainly do not ourselves deliver all the services that are needed in this area, but we partner with a tremendous amount of agencies that help us to bring those services to the residents that come to our department. And I'm happy to answer other questions, but I know that we have strong support from the community. We have a long history with the community. And I think that we, you know, we do our best to meet the needs of residents that come to our office every day.
Ms. English Braga?
Just briefly, I would just say, I think that Sandy raises a great, great question. And it's a conversation that's being had. You know, we've heard from the chief tonight about the collaboration. We've heard from Susie about the collaboration between the Police Department and Human Services. And I think, you know, it's important to note that we are always looking for ways to kind of have a more robust response to the community needs, particularly as they are dynamic and changing, depending on, you know, some of the different pressures folks are facing. But I would say that I, and I think Susie touched upon it, that line item number, and, you know, we're open to conversations about how that grows or changes or is allocated, but it isn't really representative of the amount of services that are delivered because of those collaborations with other organizations. You know, a lot of times Falmouth Human Services is the clearinghouse. So they're that first stop, and then the individual is connected with services elsewhere. So I just want people to understand that there's, you know, that department does an incredible amount of work with other organizations, other healthcare providers to connect individuals. So that number isn't, you know, it's, it's not the beginning and the end of the representation of what the town delivers. But it's a good question that Sandy raises and one that we continue to talk about for sure.
Thank you, Megan. Very, very well said.
Okay, anything else on Human Services? Falmouth Public Library. IT, if you could bring over Mary Ellen Alwatt? Ms. Alwatt?
Thank you. Mary Ellen Alwatt, Precinct Four, and President of the East Falmouth Village Association. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask if there's an increase in the funding of line 214 to add additional hours to the east and north branches of the library?
Do we have someone to answer that question on our side? Mr. Johnson, stop.
I think we have Linda Collins on the, on the video and she can respond to that question.
Hello? Hi.
Yeah, I can hear you now, Ms. Collins.
Okay, great. We're constantly adjusting our hours at the library. And most recently, we changed our hours at the main library so that we could be open more consistent hours that people could remember, opening every day at 10:00 a.m. and closing at either 5:30 or 8:30. In previous years, we've adjusted the hours at east and at north. I think next in line, we would look at the hours at East Falmouth Library. But a little bit at a time, we can't do it all in one big step. But this year, we addressed the, the main library hours.
Well, I just want to say that our East Falmouth Library is vital to our village and our residents want extended hours. Right now, there, it's only open, I think, two days, a half a day and one night until seven o'clock. So if at all possible, it would be good if we could increase funding for those other branches so that those villages are able to, be able to use, use the library.
I appreciate those comments. And in this year, we're working on our strategic plan and the need for additional hours at the East Falmouth Library has been identified in the survey that we've done of the community.
Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that.
Thank you for bringing it up, Mary Ellen.
Okay, IT, I have Joe Neto.
Joe Neto, Precinct Nine. Yes, Linda did mention that as the Director of the Falmouth Library Support Fund. But it's been identified in, in the strategic plan. But I do have to say that many people know my association of the library here in East Falmouth. I've numerous times have asked, especially on Friday, Linda, where the library is closed. Now, many people have asked for, you know, five days a week, hopefully, a year from now, that the budget can be increased in salaries and wages so that we can get not only East Falmouth open, but I know North Falmouth is open very limited hours. So I'm glad it was brought up by Mrs. Alwatt as the President of the East Falmouth Village Association. It is, is a concern of the constituents that I have in this part of town. So thank you very much for bringing this up.
Okay, Recreation Department. Beach Department. Retirement. Unemployment. Health Insurance. Life Insurance. Medicare Tax. Other Employee Benefits. Court Judgments. Town Insurance. Long-Term Excluded Debt. Long-Term Unexcluded Debt. Short-Term Debt. And the last page, the Revenue Line Items. IT, I have Ms. Aldwart.
Thank you again. Mary Ellen Alwatt, Precinct Four. Under J, I would like a point of clarification, please. The amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars, that appears to be the amount that was appropriated for last year's debt on this line.
year's debt on this line. And my question is, shouldn't the appropriation decrease to match the debt schedule in the back of the warrant booklet? When I ran some numbers, it was like over appropriated over $71,000. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I don't know if the number has changed, if it would actually change the amount that has been appropriated for debt in one of our debt schedules that we previously just went over.
Yeah, it wouldn't. Let me look at the... I went over these numbers a couple times. I, I mean, it doesn't, it wouldn't decrease by $70,000. The waterways is half of the, the debt of the, of the marina. And then there's other debt for the bulkheads. So it wouldn't decrease by that amount. And if I look at last year, let me pull up the budget. I mean, sometimes we do refinancing. If it decreased, it would be a significant amount. It wouldn't affect the budget. I, I don't have the time to go over all the calculations right now. It's, it would be a small amount.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Aldwart?
Mr. Moderator, I did the calculations based on the debt schedule in the back of the book, and I came up with a totally different number of $202,982.
So Ms. Aldwart, you're saying your number was higher than that revenue appropriation?
No, it's lower by $71,691. Because the, the debt goes down each year.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but you said your calculation was 200 and something thousand.
Yep.
It's 131 here, so that would have increased.
It would have been increased, right?
Right. Well, why don't we do this? I, I don't feel comfortable going, you know, saying, okay, that's right, because every year, it's like around 131. It would have decreased slightly, because it is 50% of one bond issue. If it's, I will go over the numbers. If there needs to be a change, we can make it in the November town meeting before, before we set the tax rate.
That would be good.
But if you look at the his, if you look at the history for the waterways, it goes down slightly.
Right.
Every year. It wouldn't go up 70,000, so I'm not comfortable agreeing with that.
Right. No, no, I did the wrong amount there. I'm sorry. But I think you need to take a look at it, and I'd appreciate it. We can talk about it in November. Thank you.
Ms. Fenwick is next on my list?
I have a housekeeping issue on the yellow pages just before we conclude. The very top of each of the yellow pages says fiscal year '21 budget recommendations. I believe it should be fiscal year '22.
Good catch.
Okay. Do I get a thousand dollars for that? No, anyway, thanks.
Get that extra 500 that Joe Neto wanted to give me. Yeah, so at the end, at the top, the header says FY '21 budget. It's actually the FY '22 budget, so it doesn't affect our appropriation vote, though, but good, good catch, Ms. Fenwick. Mr. Dinen, next on my list?
Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Yeah.
I had a follow-up question on the yellow page. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your question. On the human services, Line 208, outmigration prevention, 20,000. What is that for? 208, Line 208. I get an explanation of that.
I don't know if Susie's coming back on, but I can, oh, there she is. Okay.
Ms. Hauptman?
Those are, those are human services funds that come, come through our department and are contracted with an agency that is addressing, the term is outmigration. What it, what it really is defining is the retention of young working age residents to the town of Falmouth, so the fleeing of working age folks from, from the Cape in general. And right now, those funds are, are contracted with the YMCA of Cape Cod, and they are delivering a project that is recruiting, training, and developing childcare workers for the Falmouth area, as well as providing childcare scholarships to families in Falmouth in an effort to address that barrier of affordable childcare in the area.
Thank you.
And I'll just take this, a quick opportunity. Ms. Hauptman, in her department, they have this competitive grant process where they set priorities in subject areas, much different from the old human service budgets that we used to see where we were just sort of throwing money in different directions, but they're actually have developed some strategic objectives, and then they put out the RFPs in those categories each area. So again, ahead of the curve from what I see other human service departments doing with their budgets for those that have them. And so my hat's off to, to Falmouth Human Services for the way you're managing those priorities now. Anything else on the budget? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify, oh, we gotta do this by a poll. If IT could put up a poll for approval of the budget? I miss being able to do the voice votes.
One moment, Mr. Moderator. Just have to type that as a different one.
Okay, all town meeting members should have a panel up on their screen to vote to approve the budget. All those in favor, press yes. All those opposed, press no, and then hit submit. Okay, we're almost ready to close out this poll, so if you approve of the budget, vote yes. If you don't approve, vote no, and then hit submit. IT, if you could give us the results of Article Four. By a counted vote of 194 in favor and one opposed, Article Four passes as recommended. Article Five, this is to raise and appropriate $1,032,079 and transfer into the capital improvement stabilization fund. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, we recommend that the town vote to raise and appropriate $1,032,079 and transfer to the capital improvement stabilization fund.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion as recommended. This requires a two-thirds vote because it's moving money to a stabilization fund. Is there any discussion on Article Five? Hearing none, IT, if you could open a poll on Article Five? The poll is up. All those in favor of the recommendation signify by pressing yes. All those opposed, no. Okay, all town meeting members, vote yes or no, and hit submit. Okay, IT, let's close out the poll on Article Five. By a count of vote of 193 in favor and one opposed, the necessary two-thirds is met, and Article Five passes as recommended. Article Six, this is to raise and appropriate $500,000 and transfer into the other post-employment benefits trust fund. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion?
To vote to, as printed, to raise and appropriate $500,000 and transfer into other post-employment benefits trust fund.
Okay, any discussion on Article Six? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. IT, if you could put up a poll for Article Six? Town meeting members now have the poll in front of them to vote in favor of the recommendation. Vote yes. Opposed, vote no, and then hit submit. Okay, all those in favor of Article Six as recommended, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and hit submit. Okay, IT, if we could have the results of Article Six? By a count of vote of 193 in favor and three opposed, Article Six passes. Article Seven, this is to raise and appropriate $350,000 for the purpose of wage settlements to employees of the town. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion?
At the town vote of Article Seven as printed.
Okay, any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none, the question will come on Article Seven, the main motion as recommended. IT, if you could put up a poll. Town meeting members should have a poll in front of them to vote in favor of Article Seven as recommended. Vote yes. Opposed, vote no, and then hit submit. All those in favor of raising and appropriating $350,000 for wage settlements, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and hit submit. Okay, IT, I think we're ready for the results on this one. By a count of vote of 191 in favor and four opposed, Article Seven passes as recommended. Article Eight, on Article Eight, there is a scribbler's error in the recommendation. Just so you know, the fiscal year 2021 budget. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion?
To vote Article Eight with the correction as noted, the $720,000 for, from transferring from the health insurance to the accounts listed.
Okay, this is transferring $720,000 within the fiscal 2021 budget. Any discussion on Article Eight? Hearing none, IT, if we could have a poll for Article Eight? We have the poll up for town meeting members. All those in favor of the recommendation of Article Eight signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no, and then press submit. Last call on Article Eight. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, IT, I think we're ready for the results. By a count of vote of 198 in favor and two opposed, Article Eight passes as recommended. Article Nine, to vote to transfer the amount of $900,000 from certified free cash for the purpose of funding line item 01-220-5130, additional gross overtime for the fire rescue department. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion?
We recommend to vote Article Nine as printed.
Okay, this is as recommended, Article Nine. Ms. Conley is on my list. Ms. Conley?
Hi. Anne Conley, Precinct Six. So at our precinct meeting, I asked a question about the overtime, and I wanted to have it broken out by station, and I was told that that would be presented this evening.
Okay. Do we have that presentation? Chief?
Good evening, Smith Fire Chief. That question was asked of the precinct captain, and being directed to look into that information regarding per station overtime wasn't available for this meeting. I can say that, just to give you an idea of what the cost has been or the hours that have been, we were able to cover the station, West Falmouth Station, in July, August, and Sep, in July, August, September, October, more robustly. And since, in the ensuing months, it's been, it's been decreased somewhat, but we continue to offer the overtime to our personnel, and they staff the stations and accept the overtime when available. However, our primary concern is to staff the, to 14 at the beginning of the shift.
Okay, so, so the question that I asked at our precinct meeting is not, nobody has that data?
We don't, the, the question that you asked was to how many hours in overtime were spent on each station, on each station, and we don't have necessarily those records. We just hire at the beginning of the day, and we have a, a amount of overtime that we see departmental-wide for each payroll week. So I can tell, I can say that it back in, in March was... was the last estimate overtime cost per week were about $33,000.
Okay, but you don't know what stations that, was it all the stations? Was it just West Falmouth?
It's whatever station we need to staff. So it encompasses stations 1, 2, 3, and 5, and Station 4 is on a voluntary basis. So the overtime is, is as needed for those particular stations to maintain the 14-person staffing level that we have.
Okay, so I guess I just wanna, and I'll try to, you know, I, you're probably, actually, I think you're married to one of my friends from high school. So I, I will tell you that I, I think if we're gonna have these kinds of articles and this level of discourse and, and, and the amount of people looking into your budgets for your staffing and a proposition two and a half override and things like that, we should have this information available to town meeting. If we don't, then frankly, I'm not very comfortable voting in the affirmative. However, I certainly don't want to recommend to my fellow town meeting members that we're not gonna have adequate staffing for our fire and rescue, because that is ridiculous. However, you're putting us in a bad position, and I want it on the record that we need to get the data and the information if we're gonna make informed, responsible decisions. And I thank you for your answering my questions, Chief.
Welcome.
Hey, IT, I have Mr. Donahue on the list. Mr. Donahue?
Yes, I have a question. Maybe this goes to Jennifer more than the chief. But is this just a governmental way of financing departments by having horrendous overtime? And if, here again, I always go back to if it was private industry, and the chief came in to a company and said, hey, I got 900,000 in overtime that I didn't budget for, that we didn't plan for. He'd be fired that very day. But it seems that this is the way we do it. And if that's the way we do it, I think we should tell people that, yes, we are going to spend all we have. It would just not go that way. I'm sorry, I don't mean to pontificate, but it just, you know, if it was 100,000, even a half a million, I could say, okay, you know, things happen. But almost a million dollars in overtime for just one public department doesn't make sense. And you know you need the men. It's not like, you know, we had some tremendous fire or some catastrophe that, that we had to have the men around the clock for days, weeks, and we ran up the bill. This is just operating, this is day-to-day operating. Thank you.
There's an extensive explanation in the one. I didn't understand, I mean, is there a direct question there? I mean, this year's exceptionally large for the reasons stated in the explanation.
Okay. Anything else on Article 9? IT, if we could put up a poll for Article 9. Recommendation is $900,000 from Certified Free Cash for the overtime for the fire department. Poll is up. Town meeting members in favor signify by voting yes. Those opposed, no, and then hit submit. All town meeting members in favor of the recommendation of Article 9, vote yes. Opposed, no, and hit submit. Last call for the vote. Okay, IT, I think we're ready for the results on this one. By account of vote of 172 in favor and 23 opposed, the article passes. Article 10. Article 10, this is vote to authorize the continued use of revolving funds. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move Article 10 as recommended.
Okay, Article 10 as recommended. Any discussion on Article 10? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion. IT, if we could put up a poll. Poll is up. All those in favor of approving the continued use of revolving funds signify by voting yes. Those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, last call for the approval vote on Article 10 as recommended. All those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, no, then hit submit. Okay, IT, I think we're ready for this one. By account of vote of 191 in favor and four opposed, the article passes. Article 11, this is to transfer the amount of $800,000 from Certified Free Cash for project management, design, and construction of a new fire station located on Sandwich Road. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 11 as recommended.
Okay, as recommended. Ms. Conley is on my list.
Hi, thank you, David. So town meeting, Ann Conley, Precinct 6. This article we can vote against. I personally don't think that the fire station, I mean, sorry, the fire department has their ducks in a row. I will say that Chief Smith is relatively new, and he's inherited somewhat of a problem, and I think, you know, I feel for him in that regard. But I will say that we approved a proposition two and a half override. There's been a very, obviously, the pandemic's been hell for all of us, as we're witnessing here on Zoom. Receipts are down, we've heard about that. I don't think this is the time. I think that we should get through the pandemic. We should allow the civil service examinations to be held, names come forward, firemen be trained, and Chief Smith get his staffing up adequately to cover the existing fire stations that we have before we add to his responsibilities with a capital project, and of course, a whole new set of needs as it relates to staff and equipment. So I recommend and ask that you support me and vote no on Article 11. Thank you.
Okay, IT, next on my list is Mr. Sellers.
Hi, good evening. Paul Sellers, Precinct 6. With Ms. Conley, I would ask that town meeting members vote negative on this article. Part of the reasoning for myself is that at the precinct meeting recently for 5 and 6, we did ask for, hopefully, we'll see it tonight, an outline of what the staffing levels will look like if and when a new station is built in the Hatchell area, and what the impacts of that will be on the remaining fire stations in town. As Ms. Conley pointed out, a lot of effort was made townwide, resoundingly, to increase our fire department staffing. And we just wanted to know if that staffing level that the former chief outlined was what he needed to maintain those stations was going to be adequate if we added a new station, or are we in fact going to need to add more firefighters to accommodate an additional station in town? And really, what is the future plans for the staffing levels? We would rather see a complete outline and make sure that we're completely covering all the needs for the departments and all the areas in town before we move ahead with voting significant amount of money for a design for a new station. So at this time, I would ask that town meeting members vote this down. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, Article 11? Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to confirm that the issue of fire department staffing has been discussed on several occasions on the select board level with Chief Smith and prior to that, also Chief Small. And I guess the question for town meeting members is, do you really want to delay something that has been anticipated and proposed for over 30 years? Here you have an opportunity to finally move forward on it, to work with the select board, to work with the citizens, volunteer citizens committee that identified this fire station location. We want to continue to kick the can down the road and not to move forward with improvements in public safety. So I appeal to town meeting members to allow us finally to get over the top on this and to move forward with this critical public safety enhancement for the town. Thank you.
Okay, IT, next on my list is Mike Zmuda. Go ahead, Mike, you're unmuted. Michael, can you hear me? We appear to be having a microphone issue again. Mr. Zmuda, if you could call into that line if you are unable to activate your mic. You are unmuted. Okay, IT, if you could bring over Gina Weber. Mr. Zmuda, if you could call into that number.
Can you hear me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Gina Weber, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I just wanted to clarify the location for this on Sandwich Road. Is this not part of the the requested land for use for ball fields and recreation? Or is it not going to tap into that same area?
Ms. Agon Sprega?
Yes, thank you for asking the question. And we have had conversations with the REC committee. So it is where the lacrosse fields are, you know, well, the field that's primarily and often used for lacrosse, it's that un, that undeveloped portion in the front. So in our discussions with recreation, you know, there were discussions about what potential they would have for, you know, further development of that area. And this particular section wasn't, you know, there will be some parking that's part of it, but we did have, and I know Sandy Cuny is in attendance tonight, we did have the support of the REC committee, and we've had ongoing conversations and that, those discussions, REC committee as they were with the development of the new senior center, they'll be a big part of those conversations as we go forward. So you're correct, it is that parcel, and part of why the committee that we put together of citizens chose it is because it's already town, a town-owned parcel, right on a main road. So we do anticipate that it would, it obviously takes up a portion of that, but again, I think that was discussed thoroughly with, with the REC committee, and we recognize that we have other land that we may need to develop for fields in the future. So that is well noted.
Thank you.
Okay, IT, next I have Ms. Conley again.
Hi, thank you, David. Ann Conley, Precinct 6. I have a question and then a follow-up to Mr. Suso's comments. When we were working back for the question, I think it was question one, to get the artificial turf field built at the high school, and when the town did an assessment of fields, I know that that parcel was looked at, and it's my memory that there was some sort of issue with the deed and an agreement with the abutters. I think one is the Unitarian Universalist Church, and then the Jewish congregation. I think they have a graveyard that butts up to that parcel. There was something about noise and certain mornings of the week, so that's one question, if we could clarify that. And then the second point that I, and I really, I don't want to be impolite, but I, I think it's important that Mr. Suso understands that many of us have asked questions. I asked questions at the precinct meeting call, asked questions at the precinct meeting call sellers, and, and they weren't answered. And so I don't think asking town meeting or encouraging town meeting members to take a closer look at articles and ask for data and numbers and what it's gonna mean is kicking the can down the the street. What it is, is us being diligent and doing what we were elected to do by our neighbors, by our friends, by our community. And I take that role really seriously, and frankly, it borders on insulting. Thank you.
Mr. Suso or Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Moderator, as was reported at a select board meeting recently where this was discussed, this was reviewed by town council. There are absolutely no deed restrictions which would compromise the ability to put this fire station on this parcel which is less than two acres. And I personally have been in touch with representatives of both congregations which were just referred to, and advised them and received feedback from them. And in fact, the concept of a fire station here was welcomed.
Okay, we actually have on the telephone, which is plugged to a microphone, I guess, Mr. Zmuda. Mr. Zmuda, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Moderator, through you to Chief Smith. If this article were to pass and be approved, what station number is going to be, to be assigned to the Hatchell station? Is it gonna be Station Number 6?
Chief?
Good question. Haven't gotten that far in our planning on what station number that's gonna be. We'll look at the disposition of the other stations, and we'll select an appropriate number for the station when the time is appropriate.
Okay, I'm a little perplexed by not being that far down the road. Let me go to my next question. If that is Station 6, and if I hear you correctly, that is not the official position of the town to go to a six-station model versus a five-station model. Is that correct?
With regards to, you know, five or six-station model, that's still been being discussed with the administration and the select board.
All right. I hate hypotheticals, but I have to ask a question. Given your current Given your current 14-man model, should this become a six-station, it's going to require a minimum of at least two additional firefighters, which I guess will have to be appropriated in the 2023 budget around the same time the station opens. Not have that current staffing level to put two additional firefighters into Hatchell for a number six station?
Currently, as we go about with the hiring process, having two additional personnel or two personnel assigned there with our numbers when we're complete with the hiring may occur. However, if we have what has been discussed before, six-station models, I think Mr. Suso has been very forthcoming with the discussions on where we are with staffing and how we're going to be looking forward to staffing needs in the future.
Mr. Suso?
And again, going back to the six-station model, if that building were to have an ambulance in it, we're going to need a new ambulance because currently we only have four with one for spare. So that would require an additional two firefighters to have a, an engine and an ambulance in the six-station.
And currently, we are, with the staffing that we are, you know, going to be achieving through the override, the two additional personnel, that's going to put us at a point where we would be able to put two personnel there. But again, looking at the disposition of the West Falmouth station and working with a five-station model with our current numbers, we would be able to achieve that. As far as an additional ambulance, you're correct, we do have four ambulances currently in service and we have a fifth reserve ambulance. And we are working on a new engine, putting an engine in reserve and, you know, hopefully, you know, we're going to be continuing to, you know, plan appropriately for that station and staffing and with equipment.
I have Mr. Suso. Wanted to say?
One final question, Mr. Moderator.
No, wait a minute. Mr. Suso has been on the screen here for a while. Go ahead, Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to emphasize that this whole concept of five versus six stations was specifically reviewed by the consultant, which was authorized by town meeting to analyze three years of actual run data from the fire department of that. The results of that were presented to the select board about a year ago and have been on the town website. But fundamentally, all those concepts and inquiries regarding staffing and requirements to, from a public safety standpoint, are available and have been discussed and are anticipated with the direction in which we are proceeding.
Mr. Zamuda?
Yeah, last question. I would have preferred to see a northwest station open first to eliminate some of these personnel issues. Best case scenario, build two at the same time. But I have to agree with an earlier speaker that I don't, I don't think the town has a ducks in a row on this yet. So thank you.
Okay, next I have Mr. Latimer on my list. Mr. Latimer, can you hear us? You're with us and you're unmuted. Mr. Latimer, can you hear me? All right, Mr. Latimer, we're going to have to have you call that line. And I think IT, if we can find out what the common thread is between these three speakers that can't speak, whether it's their device or do we have a connection issue here? But all three of these speakers were unmuted and are unable to communicate. Let's bring over Mr. Neto.
Okay, just, just got the unmute, thank you. I'm Joe Neto, precinct nine. I've been in discussion with the buyer chief on the manning in regards to the overtime article. And we are short staff, you know, right now. And a lot of, some of this is due to the pandemic. But, but now I'd like to address the comments to this article, and I'd like my comments to be directed to the Board of Selectmen. And I made this comment to the police chief. We have too many buyer department balls in the air and we don't have a definitive plan. We had an override. We have this article, then we have overtime. Now we have this article, we've found a site. But many people in talking to me want to know what direction is the town going to go with the whole fire department? And that's a, that's an answer that I want to get too. We are doing this in a very piecemeal way. Private business would not do it this way. The whole enchilada, the whole ball of wax. And I feel that that's what many town meeting members want to know. Many taxpayers who pay for this want to know. Not let's build this station now, we'll address next year, eight, north and west. No. If you want the vote, if you want my vote and other people's vote, I think what we have to see is this whole fire department question. If we build this station, do we have the, what's it going to cost for the, plus the equipment and the men? And what are we going to do? The people in West Falmouth want to know. I know if I lived in West Falmouth, I'd want to know what's going to happen to quote-unquote "my" station. And I think that the resident taxpayers of this town deserve to have all of these answers all put on the table at once. And then we can go ahead and design and build fire stations, knowing we have the staff, knowing we're going to have to hire more staff, knowing it's going to cost us X amount of dollars to put equipment in that station. One speaker mentioned earlier on the 900,000 for overtime. Oh my God, where does this end? Is this how we're going to do business? So this is a very complex, because it's hard to understand the, the fire department staffing. But I think the Board of Selectmen, and that's who I'm talking to, the Board of Selectmen should tell us exactly what's going to happen with all of this. And let's get rid, I'm sorry, this piecemeal approach, okay, okay, this money today, 800,000. We'll let you know what we're going to do with north and west after we build it. No, that's not the answer. That's not the answer the people I talk to want. They want to know the whole picture. And I think we deserve the whole picture. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Brown? Doug Brown?
I just wanted to comment that this on without, I wanted to.
Mr. Brown, I think your internet connection is cutting out.
Didn't want to have the echo from the two devices. I'm sorry. Is it working okay?
Yep.
Well, so when I agreed to put this on without, without arguing about putting it on the warrant, I did say at that time, I wanted to have this whole discussion about what is the total big picture and revisit at another select board meeting prior to this point. And so, I'm sorry that that didn't happen, but it does need to happen. We need to know definitively, are we going to substitute the Hatchell station and eliminate the West Falmouth station? If so, we need to be clear that that's the case. It seems like that's where we're headed, because Mr. Suso just referenced again what was said in the study by the, pardon, the study there, I forgot the name now. But that is just subjective. They did say that was their ultimate result because they were based on five-station models in that study. But it says in the beginning of that study as well, it's up to the elected officials to determine the level of risk that's acceptable in their town. In my case, I feel personally that if we put the Hatchell station, it's not a substitute for West Falmouth. And if you look at the way the town is segregated, we're just going to be substituting one red zone for another. So I agree, we need to have the full discussion. I was willing to go forward with this construction of the station and hope to work it out along the way, but we haven't had any further discussion since, so it's hard to answer all those questions that you will have because we haven't discussed it. So it's just a tough position to be in at this time, and we can't really definitively say what we're really going to do. So that's my feeling, and I think we still need to do a little more talking, come to a decision as to whether or not we're going to go with six stations or five. Personally, I think we need to have six until we get to the point where we're going to build a new station. And we need to commit to staffing and need to staffing to go to 16. We can't even staff 14 right now, but I think we need 16 before we build the station. Unless we're going to close north and west and build it consolidated. So that's my position right now. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Braga?
So let me just take a step back for a moment. As many of us know, there has been a gap in our coverage in town. And the gap isn't in West Falmouth, the gap is not in North Falmouth, the gap is in East Falmouth, it is in Hatchell, it is in the section of town where we are proposing to build this fire station. I think it is correct, there are many moving parts. And there is a discussion to be had, and we've been having it for many years, about how we build up an appropriate responsive fire department. Because for a long time, it was understaffed. And we, we've talked about this quite a bit. I won't go into, we talked about when we, when we did the Prop two and a half override, we went into the history and we talked about the deficits. And so this board has been, I think, not taking it in piecemeal because somehow we're trying to pull the wool over anyone's eyes, but because that is, you know, how we are trying to fix something that has been long broken. And the first piece we saw was that we had a change in our contract and we were unable to satisfy that, those new requirements in a contract that is, by the way, fully appropriate. We're operating under staffing model that put our firefighters at risk and the public, therefore, at risk. And we did that for far too long. So the contract that was negotiated was appropriate to keep the men and women who work for that department safe and to keep the rest of us safe when they show up to respond to an emergency. So we addressed that, and now we are trying to address something that we have for decades been told by report after report is just, you know, an absolute underservice for a very large portion of town. And I know we talked about the town as a whole and it's correct, that's how our, all of our systems operate as a whole. But I want to be clear that there is a portion of our, our community that is getting much longer response times because we don't have a facility to respond anywhere near that part of town. And the citizens group that we put together worked incredibly hard, certainly made up of individuals who are skeptical of town government, rightfully so, you know, took a good, hard eye looking at it. And this is the recommendation that they made. And we had a very robust discussion where we talked about, do we continue to have a five-station model or is our future a six-station model? And I understand what Mr. Neto's saying, and I hear his frustration. We're all taxpayers too. But the reality is that we are trying to address a very significant problem. And when we, when we build this station that is so long overdue that it's hard to believe we're having this, this conversation now, then we will look at the numbers, which is what we always have to do. We have to look at what our, what our budget can support, what our staffing is going to support, and we will continue to have that public discussion. In the last two years, we've talked more about this particular issue than probably any other issue. And the board is going to give a, a good amount of time to it and continue to have robust discussion. But I would ask that town meeting support this project as it is really putting folks at risk. And I, I really suggest folks go back and look at, and you can, you can call the town manager's office, they can direct you how to get it, these studies over and over again. And Chief Smith is new to the position of chief, but he's not new to our department. He's been here for decades and he can speak specifically to all the studies that have been done that show the need for a station in this area. So I, I hear the frustration, we all feel it, it's not an easy solution, but we believe strongly that this is absolutely required.
Okay, Mr. Scherer. I had Mr. Scherer on the list. I see the hand going up and down, so if we can bring Mr. Scherer over. Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
With Dan Scherer, precinct six. Yes, we need this station. And it has been a red area. And it is, is needed. And I live in West Falmouth. And we need the West Falmouth station. So I'd like to make an amendment to this, that no money raised for this article may be used until a published, a plan is presented to the, oh, the public and voted on for a five-year plan of staffing and equipping the West Falmouth Fire Station. I would hand it to you, but it's a, you're a long way away. Did you understand that, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, I'm trying to decide if it's within the scope, so just if you could just give me one moment.
I have another question too.
Why don't you ask the other question while I consider the first one?
I want to, the override we passed, how is that being used? Because we obviously aren't going to get and be able to pay for these firemen that we want.
So the, the money for the override was for those positions and anything in excess of what was spent accrues to the general fund?
I don't think that's the way the law reads. I'm not a lawyer. I mean, I did go to business school and take some law courses, but I have read the override rule, and that money must be spent in the calendar year for what was on the nomination of what we voted on. And I can read what we voted on right here.
Ms. Mullin, let's get you an answer from Ms. Mullin.
Yeah, Dan, you're absolutely right. The monies have to be spent for what was voted on, but we haven't hired the eight new firefighters, so we can't spend the money. We can't spend the money if we haven't hired them.
Well, but you have to spend it, you have to spend the money on what we voted on or, or give us back the money. It's not that you can put it in a, in a, an account someplace and spend it next year. It's got to be spent on the fiscal town year. That is clear stated in the law. And next year, next year, you can spend it on any damn thing you want, and we can't say anything about it. But the first year, you've got to send, spend it on those firemen or give the money back to us. And maybe forget the override altogether and start over again. to us, and maybe, or forget the override altogether and start over again.
Well, I'm not, we're not spending on anything other than what has been, it has been indicated, but if we don't hire them, we can't spend it, so, I, I, I don't.
Well, then, you give us back our money, or go to court.
Okay, so, so, uh, Dan, I thi- I think the amendment, um, of bringing in a qualification of a plan outside of just transferring the money for the design of this program would be beyond the scope. If, if we had something about a plan, five-year plan, um, dependent upon it, but I'm going to, I'm going to say that the amendment, um, to add that is beyond the scope of the article as printed, so, uh, in, in your case, I would vote no, and then, and then ask them to do a plan, and then come back and ask for the money.
Well, I would, we have been, we in West Falmouth have been lied to constantly for a year now, and we, we are losing our, we're becoming in a red zone if we lose West Falmouth. So, I will ask everybody to please vote no, and we can come up with this at the next town meeting with a plan and an idea, and try and make this a fair town, because you're certainly not doing it now. Thank you very much, and please vote no. And I, I don't, and I also disagree with you, Mr. Moderator, that this isn't part of this process, because we are talking fire stations, this is a fire station, and, uh, I, I, I can't fight you, I guess, but, uh, I, I can say I disagree with you badly.
Okay, Mr. Hargreaves is next on my list.
Thank you very much. Um, just trying to balance the weight of the discussion here, I'd like to underline everything that, um, Megan Braga said, uh, and, but some more too, because I'm very distressed by the partisanship that's demonstrated in the arguments about West Falmouth versus the rest of the town. There's been a long process and a consultant's report, and for one, the, anyone who says we're trading one red zone for another is misrepresenting the results of that consultant's report. If you read the consultant's report, you'll see that, uh, areas do change shade, there's shades of green and yellow, but the big red zone is in Hatchville now, and with a five-station model with the Sandwich Road Fire Station, uh, everyone is equitably served in public safety. And what we're doing here is getting together as a town and delivering an equitable level of safety to the entire town. And I'm getting worn out, really, even seeing some of the members of our executive board misrepresenting the study. I think they must have read the study, but I, um, it doesn't, it isn't what the study has said. And you can see from the warrant book that the finance committee has studied this very carefully, we've interviewed all those concerned in making this recommendation, and I would also take issue with the fact that there hasn't been, uh, some kind of thinking about the long-term plan. We used three years' worth of data to demonstrate that this is the right thing to do, and I urge you to support this money, to plan and move ahead. We'll gather and analyze additional data and decide if we, where we need to put a new northwest combined station, or what else we need to do to continue to deliver equitable services. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Brown?
Well, if you read that study carefully, you'll see that it says, closing either Woodhull or West Falmouth will significantly increase response times to those areas. So, that's clear to me. I don't think we should increase, increasing response times to any area of town.
Okay, I have Peter Clark.
Good evening, hope you can hear and see me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Peter Clark, Precinct One, and, and I, and I want to argue in favor of this article. I believe that it is the appropriate step forward for an issue that has been studied fully, um, and needs to be solved. I regret that there are people with frustrations about the override and how it's spent, and I regret that there are people who have issues about the manning of the West Falmouth Station. The overtime issue, a third issue, is well explained in the, in the budget booklet, and I, and I don't think that should be something that bothers people personally. But I, I don't think the frustrations about the override and the West Falmouth Station should cause anyone to hold this hostage, um, because they don't like where the town is on those two issues. This is an important, um, equity issue for coverage for the town, and we should be taking this step to move it forward. So, I urge people to vote forward. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on my list is Mike Duffney. Okay, Mike, I got you on our side, just need you to unmute.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I, um, I, I want to say this has generated some really good conversation that is needed over this issue, and I think that it's, it's fine for us to, to vote this, because this is a perfect location for a station that's well-needed. But at the same time, I think that we still have time to vote the amount of money when, you know, when the time comes to fund the station. And the meantime, let's, you know, let's see what we can do about the Western and North Falmouth Station, because we need to either go to a six-station, or we need to combine and build something, and then, uh, close what we need to, but not just close it, because we do create a red zone. I sat on the committee, I co-chaired with Trish Vavoli, we do create a red zone if we close West Falmouth, we cannot ignore that. Um, this, this does answer a longstanding problem, but we still have a problem. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, next on my list is Leo Fahy.
Hello, Mr. Moderator?
Yep, I can hear you.
I call for the question.
Okay, we have a motion to move the previous question. IT, can we put up a poll? All those in favor of closing discussion will vote yes, all those opposed to closing discussion will vote no. And the poll should be on the screen now, vote to move the previous question. All those in favor of closing discussion signify by voting yes. All those opposed signify by voting no, and then hit submit, this requires two-thirds.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Moderator, excuse me. Uh, I was just kicked off of my voting on my, on my second device here. It just, I was just logged off, so, um, I don't know.
So, tell me how you're going to vote, and I'll add you to the total.
Okay. I'm going to vote yes, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to log back in now.
Okay, this is the last call to vote, to move the previous question, all in favor will vote yes, all those opposed no, and hit submit. IT, could you bring, uh, Mr. Donald over for a point of order? Also, let's, uh, let's show the poll result as you're bringing him over. By accounted vote of one hundred and seventy in favor, and twenty-two opposed, the necessary two-thirds passes to move the previous question. Mr. Donald, you had a point of order?
It's, it's moved now that the vote has already been taken. I was wondering whether we could take no action on this article.
Uh, well, if you, if you vote no, that would be taking no action.
Oh, no, it would be taking action, it's voting it down. If we took no action, we could address it in the next town meeting, a special town meeting.
Uh, no, you can't, because it's not in the warrant of the special town meeting. This, this article does not appear in the warrant of the special town meeting.
Well, didn't, didn't we, uh, take no action on some articles, so they'd appear in the special town meeting?
Yet, you took no action on the articles that do appear on the warrant for the special town meeting. This article does not appear on that warrant.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so the question will now come on the main motion, Article eleven as recommended to transfer the sum of eight hundred thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash to fund the project management, design, and construction of a new fire station located on Sandwich Road. IT, if you could put up the poll, all those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed will vote no, and then hit submit. All those in favor of the recommendation on Article eleven vote yes, all those opposed no, and then hit submit. Last call for votes on Article eleven. Okay, IT, if you could display the results. By accounted vote of one hundred and thirty-eight in favor, and fifty-four opposed, the main motion passes for Article eleven. Article twelve, this is dealing with funding for renovation of the police station. Recommendation is that the finance committee will make its recommendation on the floor. Mr. Chairman, for the recommendation, the finance committee on Article twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, um, the amount for the station renovation is estimated to be one million two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and I move indefinite postponement of Article twelve.
Okay, so we, we have a recommendation of the finance committee, uh, of indefinite postponement for a, uh, one million two hundred and seventy thousand dollar appropriation. Is there any, uh, anyone that would like to make a positive motion before we would vote on indefinite postponement? Any town meeting member should use the raise hand function if they'd like to place a positive motion on the floor? IT, if you could bring Ms. Conley over, please? Ms. Conley.
Hi, thanks, um, Ann Conley, Precinct Six. Can we have an explanation from the finance committee as to why?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if you could explain the recommendation of indefinite postponement?
Sure, um, as, as you noticed, we, the information wasn't available for our, during our course of meetings, so we waited till the last minute, and we met this evening to discuss this particular article and the funding. We didn't feel like the information we had was sufficient at this time with specifications and good estimates to ensure that all the needs were met, that we were properly funding the project, or maybe it was underfunded, and that, uh, we didn't want this to be a project where they, they came back several times, uh, to keep funding it if we really didn't know. The chief, Dunn, gave a great presentation to us this evening, but we just didn't have enough information, the committee felt uncomfortable, making a positive recommendation to the, uh, to this body at this time, and that, uh, they could come together with better information down in November, and we would, we could analyze it in a more thorough way.
That's interesting, thank you.
Okay, IT, if you could bring over Mr. Scherer.
Potentia precincts six again. I don't know how many of you have been in the police station and looked around, and what they have to work for.
Mr. Scherer, you're going to put it, one moment, are you going to put a positive motion on the floor?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let's have the motion first, because.
Okay. I'd like to pass it as written.
Uh, as written, there is no, uh, there's no.
Okay. How do you want me to do it?
This is where it's difficult, that we're not in the same room.
Yeah.
Ms. Mullin, could you share with Mr. Scherer the main motion that you presented to the finance committee of which they voted indefinite postponement?
Yes, um, let me just pull that out.
Well, can I just say Article twelve as, as presented, or as presented?
Do you want me to read it, David?
Yeah, I, let's, let's get it, because I, I think they're transferring some receipts, and, and then.
That's different than what I got in the email.
Okay. This is what it would say, that the town vote to transfer the sum of one point one million dollars from Certified Free Cash and a hundred and seventy-two thousand from the receipts reserved for appropriation, January twenty nineteen borrowing premium fund account for the purposes of Article twelve, to be expended under the jurisdiction of the town manager.
Okay, so, so, Mr. Scherer, that will be your main motion to transfer.
That would be my main motion.
Yep, okay, now you can, now you can discuss.
Okay. I think right now, we have a police station that is very inadequate for the amount of work that has to be done in this town. I think if you, if you toured the police station, you'd agree with me. I think, I think for the policeman themselves, and the chief, and rest area, and, and whatever it might be, we should go along with his wish to do this. Thank you.
Okay, this, discussions open on Article twelve, main motion as presented. Mr. Donahue?
Mr. Moderator? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, go ahead.
Please help me out on this. I believe in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen, uh, when we voted to move the communication center into the police department, I'm not sure which year it was, but at that time, there was a question coming up that, was the police station, uh, antiquated and needed to be replaced and moved to another location? And, um, it was a bitter to fight about where the call center would be, and it wound up in the basement of the, uh, police station, which is in a flood zone. My thing is, here we go again, just like the fire department, we need a police. We need a police station, a new one, built somewhere in the town and not necessarily on Main Street. So I think the selectmen should form a committee and come back with a recommendation for location, and then maybe a subcommittee to recommend how much money it's gonna cost for a new police station. This adding on, we added on to the high school. What did that do to us? You can't add on to an old building and be successful. You have to build new. And today, there's all kinds of standards and rules about police stations and what, where, and when they can be. So please, I vote this down and let's go on and do some proper research. Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Jerry... Oh, Mr. Suso, and then Mr. Patamas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to clarify. This was fully researched, and this has come up before. The new communications facility is not constructed in a flood zone, nor is the Police Department in a flood zone. We would not be suggesting this investment were that to be the case, so I wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Suso. Mr. Patamas?
Jerry Patamas, Precinct 2. I had a question as to, will there be a construction project manager for design and construction of this, so this come under DPW? In light of what the Finance Committee said, that they thought there were some shortcomings, sometimes those shortcomings can be rectified, at least explored with a good project manager.
Ms. Mullin?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Jerry. I do want to say, we do have a detailed cost estimate from the architect, and we do have a design. We're just moving... Where the dispatch area used to be on the second floor is vacant right now, so we're moving the records in there, and then we're making a training room on the side and having a vestibule when you come in, and we do have a detailed cost estimate. The detailed cost estimate is under the $1.5 million, which is required from Mass. General Law to have a project manager on this. This really is a small renovation, so the $1.2 is all in construction cost estimate. You know, construction has been going up. There's been a lot of bidding going on, so it's a very competitive environment right now. So we do have on the team, the project team, if you will, Greg Endicott, who is our new facilities manager, and he's been extremely helpful, who's been working with the architect along with Chief Dunn and myself, working on the plans and coming up with that detailed cost estimate.
Thank you. You answered the question.
Okay, next on my list, I have Mr. Latimer. Mr. Latimer? Mr. Latimer, you are on our side, and you are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. So, Richard, I'm gonna give you a phone number to call. If you could call this phone number, and then we can get you on through the telephone. Find which sheet of paper has the phone number on it. and we'll be able to get you on through that phone line. Next on my list is Mike Duffney. Mr. Duffney?
Mr. Moderator? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say that as much as I support the police, I think that they've outgrown the site that they're on downtown. And what strikes me the most is when you have a hurricane, and the hardest place to get to is down by the water, I just think that they would be better served, and we'd all be better served, if they were further back in a new headquarters with more room. We have the room in Falmouth. Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Mr. Patamas.
I already spoke. I already spoke.
I had your hand up a second time. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Any further discussion on Article 12? I T., I have James Cummings on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. James Cummings, Precinct 8. Can you hear me? All right. James Cummings, Precinct 8. As many of you also know, I'm a member of the Falmouth Police Department. I wasn't really prepared to speak on this because I thought there was a pretty good presentation that was made, so I'm gonna kind of shoot from the hip and go from a little bit of memory. And of course, I'll go with the caveat that I'm speaking as a town meeting member and not as a member of the Police Department. So, this plan, I thought, I know is well thought out. It's been well considered, and I certainly appreciate the suggestions that other members of Town Meeting have made to replace the Falmouth Police Station, which is probably long overdue. But at this point, there are some glaring issues with the station. And this plan kind of goes hand in hand with several other initiatives that the town is taking on at this time. This plan only addresses the main level of the police station, as Ms. Mullin referred to. And it's a redesign. We're not adding on to the building footprint at all. We're just utilizing the space in a better way. And in using and redesigning the first floor, we're addressing how we interact with the public as opposed to any comforts or any new features that officers will experience inside the station, which I think is also needed. As was referred to, what would be... Anybody who's been in the station now knows that our training or meeting room is in the back of the building, so you actually have to go through the secure outer portion of the building in order to get to it, which makes it restrictive for public meeting space. The plan, the design, which I will say I have seen and have the pleasure of going over, which Chief Dunn moves that space to where the central record space is now, so it's accessible from the front lobby of the building, meaning that it could be utilized for meeting space. And the reason why that not only is important for other town groups to use, but as we start to look at incorporating the campus approach of moving human services further down Main Street, the senior center next door, it's another meeting space that the town will have access to. The central records, as Ms. Mullin again said, would be moved to where the old radio room was, which is directly in front of the door when you walk in the building, so it's much clearer. Anybody who's worked inside the police station has always had kind of the staring contest with somebody when they walk in the door to figure out, are they gonna speak with a police officer, or are they looking for central records? This will go a long way to alleviate that. And the rest of the design will be moving offices around to better suit the new command structure that we have that came in under Chief Riallo, where we added another rank, the rank of lieutenant, which has kind of caused a little bit of an office tightening, where we have six sergeants in a very small area and kind of separated from the other ranks. So it just kind of cleans some of that up. It does not address other issues that are in the building, and it does not address issues that are probably most important to the members of the Police Department, in that it doesn't address the rapidly shrinking women's locker room downstairs and the outdated men's locker room, and it also does not address the prison cell block, which is not in compliance with current Massachusetts law, but is grandfathered. So those things, I think the Finance Committee was correct, that this is not the end-all of what will be needed to finish this building, but this is the first level. And I think in doing it this way, certainly don't want to speak for, you know, the manager's office or Ms. Mullin, but it allows us to utilize free cash instead of a debt exclusion to kind of update this building. I think the location of the building is great. The original structure was built in 1969. There was an addition in the mid-'80s. So we've certainly outlived what a lot of towns would consider the lifespan of a police station. But if you look at what towns are spending to replace police stations right now, I mean, you don't have to look very far. A town of our size, the replacement costs would be well in excess of $20 million. And I think for the relatively short money that we're talking about here, we could go a long way to better utilize the space that we have and ultimately make a more welcoming place for future officers and the current officers we have. So I'd ask that you support this article and support any future articles we have to update this building as well.
Ms. Mullin?
Thank you, David. Peter Johnson Staub. I just want to give the town meeting members a little bit more information. When the Finance Committee met about this at 6 o'clock this evening, I was having audio problems, like some of you tonight, and I couldn't really speak. And they were asking questions, and I was trying to log in through a phone. But they did want to see a detailed cost estimate, which we do have from the architect. And if you would like to allow it, Peter Johnson Staub can actually share that on the screen to show people that we do have a detailed cost estimate from the architect that was procured from a prior town meeting vote, just to show that we have... You know, we did go out, and this was the cost estimate we have, and we have a good contingency in there just because of the bidding environment right now. So I did want to mention that because that was a concern of the Finance Committee, but it was a tough meeting with my audio and not being heard and trying to get them the information and trying to really troubleshoot the whole thing before the meeting. We were under the gun. So I think he just showed the bottom line there. But it's very detailed with... You know, it's a detailed construction cost estimate done by Keenan and Kenny. And we're still working out some of the extras. We're trying to bring some of the costs down, which we will always continue to do in a renovation project.
And that says rates current as of February 2021?
Yes, they are. And what they did at the end, when you see the total right here, if you can scroll that down, see that this is the total estimated cost. I do have more of a contingency, especially with the renovation with costs, you know, increasing. You want to make sure you build in a really good contingency, so it's 1.72. But you can see, we do have an escalation in the design, you know, if we did, you know, going through to May 2022. But, you know, everybody knows lumber's like doubled in the last three or four months, so... You know, that's what I wanted to share everybody, and that's what the cost estimate is.
So we had the detailed plan in February, and the Finance Committee just saw it 30 minutes before the meeting tonight?
No, we just actually, that's the second one. They didn't change the date. I just got this a week ago. I have been... I was in touch with the Finance Committee. I didn't talk to the liaison. They decided to have the meeting. I'm not trying to... You know, they decided to have the meeting tonight. I told them tonight, when I could speak, that I've had the cost estimate probably for like a week. And we were working that. We had to work the cost estimate. That was from the original date. We've only had it for about a week.
Okay. Mr. Neto on my list?
So, town meeting members, I think we should listen to the FinCom. These are the people that study these questions in detail. To get a sheet of paper scrolling on the screen in front of me at 10:14 at night is not the way to conduct the town's business. We can vote this down tonight and let the article come before us in November. And have the people that we trust to study how our money should be spent. And I have never, ever voted against a recommendation, so to speak, of indefinite postponement by the FinCom, and especially when they tell us the reason is because they haven't had enough time to study it. The police station is not going anywhere. And next November, we could make a much more better... Excuse me, a better informed decision on this subject of only, what is it? Only $1.8 million. Thank you.
Okay, I T., if we could put up a poll for Article 12, the main motion, to transfer $1,100,000 from Certified Free Cash and $172,000 from Receipts Reserved for Appropriation, January 2019, Borrowing Premium Fund Account to be expended under the jurisdiction of the town manager for the renovation of the police station. That's the main motion. The poll's up for town meeting members. All those in favor signify by voting yes. All those opposed signify by voting no, and then hit submit. Okay, a warning call here for main motion on Article 12. All those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, I T., let's close out the poll. By a counted vote of 78 in favor and 107 opposed, the article does not pass. Article 13, this is to vote to transfer the sum of $500,000 from Certified Free Cash for COVID-related expenses. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $500,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purpose of funding the FEMA Special Revenue Account. This is a wording change that was... We needed to rename the account from what's printed in the warrant book.
Okay, so the main motion is the recommendation, but instead of FEMA revolving account, it's the FEMA Special Revenue Account. Any discussion on Article 13? Any discussion on Article 13? Hearing none. If IT could put up a poll for Article 13. The poll is now up. Article 13, as recommended, with the change to the special revenue account. All those in favor vote yes. All those opposed, no. And then hit submit. All those in favor vote yes. All those opposed, no. Then hit submit. Last call. Okay, IT, if we could have the results from this one. By a counted vote of 176 in favor and five opposed, the article passes. Article 14, this is to transfer the sum of $25,000 from certified free cash for parking. Mr. Chairman for the main motion.
Mr. Moderator, the recommendation that we're going to provide is more detailed than what's written in the warrant book. I move Article 14 to transfer the sum of $25,000 from certified, certified free cash for the purpose of leasing a portion of land for municipal parking at 84 Main Street in Falmouth Village, Village owned by Martha's Vineyard Bank, Assessor's Parcel 38A09018000, and being a portion of the present rear parking lot with approximately 237 feet of frontage on Catherine Lee Bates Road and containing 4.49 acres by estimate and a parcel of land at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbars Road in Falmouth, Assessor's Parcel 3915048001B, containing 0.95 acres.
So the main motion is $25,000 from certified free cash for a lease for parking at 84 Main Street, the Martha's Vineyard Bank. So it's more detailed than the original recommendation, which was just $25,000 for downtown parking. IT, could you bring over Kelly Welch, please?
Hi, Kelly Welch, Precinct 2. I'm just wondering if we, if there's any way to share a screen that shows the text for the, for the motion. You know, this is the second one we've had in a row that was rather complex. And we're just listening to it. We don't have the visual of having it up on the screen, you know, up on, projected up on the wall like we're used to.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Does IT, do you have a copy of this?
Mr. Moderator, we, we just did this this evening about two minutes before seven.
Yeah.
Didn't get a chance.
I had already left my house. I couldn't even print what I got. So, so the detailed portion of the motion is clarifying where 84 Main Street is. So it's $25,000 from certified free cash to lease for parking at that 84 Main Street. And then it gets into the parcel number and all of that. Also, town meeting members should be aware that the explanation for Article 14 in your warrant was inaccurate. Article 24 of the April 2020 warrant was indefinitely postponed. However, in the November 2019 town meeting, we did vote to authorize the selectmen to pursue parking at a few locations, this being one of them in the downtown area. So.
That's fair. You know, we're all doing the best we can. COVID has made everything more difficult. So if we don't have it, that's fine. But it's, it's just a little bit more challenging for all of us. Thank you.
I totally, totally agree with you. And I, I usually, I was just talking to the clerk. I usually hand him a sheet of paper, but I, I didn't even get to print it out because I had already left the house.
Just to clarify, I believe you also mentioned the parcel on Springbars Road.
Yes, David. Both, both, there's the, at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbars Road. We're also identifying that parcel as well.
They're both in there. Okay, so.
Yes.
So, so can you email that to somebody that can put it up on a screen? Because.
It's, it's all handwritten.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I wrote it as we spoke at about right two minutes before seven.
Okay.
Keith emailed it actually to Julian and I. So I just forwarded the email to Peter Johnson Staub, and he's going to share that email on the screen.
Okay.
Because you sent that email, Keith, to Julian and I.
The only, it, I don't know that it included the Worcester Court and Springbars Road.
It didn't. That's why, that's why now I'm confused because what I was given as the motion is, is different than what I'm being told now. So, Mr. Johnson Staub, are you able to pull up the appropriate motion on the screen?
I have the email that Ms. Mullen just referenced, and it does, it includes only one of the two parcels that are in the final motion. So I don't have the complete motion as read by Mr. Schregel. Would you like for me to put what I have on share screen? Or I can copy it into the Q and A?
By call of the chair, we're going to pass over this article. And you all can get your ducks in a row and have a slide ready for the motion and make sure that the clerk and I both get it. And then we'll come back to this article. If not, we'll dispense with it when we dissolve the meeting. So I'm going to pass over by call of the chair on Article 14. And we're going to go on to Article 15. Mr. Chairman for the main motion on Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 15 as recommended.
As recommended. This is to vote to transfer the sum of $155,000 from certified free cash for the purpose of acquiring an online permitting software. Any discussion on Article 15? Mr. Noonan?
Mr. Moderator, the questions I had were on the previous article.
Okay. Anyone that's on the list right now, if your hand is up from the previous article, please put your hand down before I start recognizing everybody on that list. Those are a few of you. Okay, Mr. Share?
Dan Share, Precinct 6. At our precinct meeting, I asked for Jennifer to have a list of all the monies and where we're getting all this free cash this time. It seems that we're really going overboard. And I am very confused where it's coming from. And I'd like a detailed, if we can't do it tonight, I'd like to see it or published in the paper or something like that. Because free cash isn't free cash. It's tax money. And I want to know for what I'm being taxed for that I shouldn't be. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Article 15. IT, if we can put up a poll for Article 15, as recommended. This is $155,000 from certified free cash to acquire an online permitting software. Town meeting members have the poll in front of them. All those in favor of the main motion signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no. And then hit submit. All those in favor of the main motion signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no. Hit submit. Last call. Okay, IT, let's put up the results on this one. By a count of vote of 159 in favor and 12 opposed, the main motion passes. Article 16, this is to vote to transfer the sum of $22,500 from certified free cash for the purpose of funding completion of the review and recodification of the zoning bylaw. Mr. Chairman for the main motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 16 as recommended.
As recommended. Is there any discussion on Article 16? Hearing none. IT, if you'd put up a poll for the main motion on Article 16 as recommended. Town meeting members have the poll in front of them. All those in favor of the main motion signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no. And then hit submit. Article 16, last call. All in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, no. And hit submit. Okay, IT, let's display the results. By a counted vote of 169 in favor and five opposed, the article passes. IT, if you could bring over Ms. Bumpus?
That was, that was a while back, and it's irrelevant because there's no such thing.
Hi, David. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I've just noticed, and I don't know if it swung along, but the last two polls have the wrong article numbers on them. And I don't know if that matters for reporting or not.
Okay. IT, can, can you help me out there as to, do we know which poll is from which article? I didn't see that on my screen, so.
I believe the reference is into, it's stating Article Vote 1, 2, 3, 4. That is specifically for us to keep track of it on our side. That's not actually what is recorded, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so if you, if you pull the roll call vote on that, like the last one, it will have the accurate article number?
We track those by the timestamps.
By the timestamp? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we can make sure. So let's just, when we, before we post them on the website, Mr. Clerk, if we could just make sure that the timestamp's accurate if the articles are posted. Yeah, okay. Yep. Okay, good. So thank you, Ms. Bumpus. The clerk actually has the numbers as I announce them as well. So he'll cross-reference the title of the, the postings that, that will appear on the website after the meeting. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Article 37, this is to vote to appropriate from fiscal 2022 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the sum of $166,820 to fund Community Preservation Committee administrative expenses. Mr. Chairman of the, oh, no, wait a minute. Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 37 as recommended.
Okay, as recommended. This is the administrative expense line item for the CPC. Any discussion on Article 37? Hearing none. The question will come on the main motion. IT, if we could put up a poll for Article 37? We've, we've got that title again. It says Article Vote 2, but this is Article 37. IT, are you able to see the Q and A text for the Article 14?
Yes, I can copy that into a document to show.
That would be great. Thank you. Can we just put Catherine Lee Bates with a K instead of a C? Okay. All those in favor of the main motion, Article 37, vote yes. All those opposed, no. Hit submit. Last call on Article 37. Okay, IT, if you could display the results. By a count of vote of 174 in favor and one opposed, Article 37 passes. By call of the chair, we'll return to Article 14. We've got a slide being prepared with the main motion language. And here it is. The $25,000 from certified free cash to lease a portion of land for municipal parking at 84 Main Street, Falmouth Village, owned by Martha's Vineyard Bank, with a parcel number and a portion of the present rear parking lot with approximately 237 feet of frontage on Catherine Lee Bates Road, containing 0.49 acres by estimate and/or a parcel of land at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbars Road, the assessor's map containing 0.95 acres to be expended under the jurisdiction of the town manager. Okay, so we're going to go back to, to discussion on this article. Next on my list was Ms. Peterson. It's actually, IT, if you could leave the slide up there, please, for a little bit. Thank you. Ms. Peterson?
Hi, this is Laura Peterson, Precinct 3. I had three questions. One is, what's the, the term of the lease? Like, how long is it for? And will the parking be available all year round? The second one is, is how many spaces approximately are you gaining? And the third is, what happened to the parking garage structure that the Chamber of Commerce helped get money to do the planning on? And where are we on that? Thank you.
I'm having a little trouble seeing all of my participants on my side here. I think Mr. Susso?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We are in negotiation on these parking leases, so it's not really the details. I'm not able to pursue. I can say that if we're able to have the process come together. have the process come together, uh, the Catherine Lee Bates, uh, road location would be approximately 30 spaces. Uh, the other location at Springbars and Worcester Court would be, uh, closer to 60 spaces. Uh, the, uh, the amount of money is only sufficient for, uh, one to two years at this point, we wanted, where we are is discussing, uh, pursuing this on an exploratory, experimental basis, and if it's successful, coming back to town meeting for additional funding for a longer term, which might include potentially some improvements tied to the, uh, term of the lease. I'm trying to think if there was another question there, uh, oh, a question about a parking deck, uh, I'm not familiar with any funds ever being released, uh, by the state, uh, to the chamber or the town for a, uh, analysis of, uh, the structured parking. I know it was talked about, but I don't think it was ever delivered. That's to the best of my knowledge, uh, others might know more about that.
Okay, um, on the, on the slide, uh, on the main motion, Catherine Lee Bates I mentioned should be with a K, uh, I noticed it wasn't changed, so if we could make that adjustment, thank you. Okay, anything else, Ms. Peterson? No, okay, next on my list is, um, Mr. Noonan.
Mr. Moderator? Uh, just a couple of questions, um, it's my understanding that we talked about this parcel on the corner of Springbars Road in Worcester Court a couple of years back, and we were supposed to get more information on what the cost would be. And now we're, Mr. Suso is coming, uh, the town's coming forward looking for, um, parking again with no definitive details. Again, it's in the process of being negotiated, and it seems like it should have been negotiated quite a while ago instead of, while he's asking for money to be appropriated, and then in the next year or the year after, the money will be sitting there, so they'll take that money and appropriate it to somewhere else because it wasn't used. So I would like to know what it costs upfront before you appropriate it. The other question I have, or a question I have is, does the town own the housing next to the Springbars Road, um, parcel that was, was speaking of?
Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, uh, first of all, it's difficult to negotiate with zero dollars, um, so we've come back to town meeting to begin that process. Uh, the town, uh, the parcel next to the, uh, corner location on Springbars and Worcester Court is in a 99-year lease to, uh, uh, a Falmouth, uh, housing nonprofit, which has developed a 40B project.
Mr. Moderator, I, I have a, a concern that, you know, we're talking about, um, a few different things over the course of tonight, um, one of them being the fire department and what to do on that with no definitive five-year plan or 10-year plan, um, as the town is normally does, or in the past that I recall. And we have no plans, or we have questions about the police station, and now we're coming up to asking for parking next to a piece of property that we leased out to the Housing Commission without thinking about that could have been parking there. Um, so I think the town needs to come up with a, an extended plan before they come to town meeting and ask for money. So I would say vote no on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Suso?
Mr. Moderator, the fact of the matter is, town meeting, um, affirmed that that parcel was to go for affordable housing. They approved the acquisition of it, uh, it was with that plan in place to suggest that somehow, uh, we should second-guess town meeting in a decision that was made in the past, and, and instead make that a parking lot instead of affordable housing, I think, uh, overlooks the historical record.
Okay, Mr. Neto?
Okay, there's the only one. I too would like to speak against this for a couple of reasons.
Joe, you were unmuted, but you muted yourself again.
Can you, outside now?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to speak against this article for numerous reasons. One, how poorly written it was, I thought it was poorly written because I've never seen a lease that didn't have a start date and an end date, and yet we don't know what that start date and end date, Mrs. Peterson asked a very valid question, are we gonna use this just in the summer, are we gonna use it all year round? I know the money, you know, how many million dollar budget, 25,000? You think some of us are being too picky, yeah, maybe we are. First of all, we deal with land, these are, these are night and day different parcels, one is downtown, the other on, is on a corner next to a housing unit. And it's not downtown, it would need public transportation to get from that parking lot. These should be treated as two separate parcels, two separate articles, and a start date and an end date, that's what, as Mr. Noonan says, get all that negotiated and then bring it to us. There's no way I can support this article with, with, with so many, so much vagueness to it. I'm sorry, it's getting late, we can only blame so much on COVID-19. I'm sorry, Mr. Suso, but you come to us with the property, with the lease, and the terms all spelled out just as if I was going to rent a piece of property or rent a house. The figures would be there, and the start date, one year, two year, three years, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Suso?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Moderator, I neglected to answer, uh, the one question, I apologize. Uh, this would be a year-round lease, um, and it would be for, uh, municipal parking, it would be, uh, uh, free of charge as we have elsewhere in downtown. Uh, we come back, uh, with a spirit, the town meeting, as you indicated, Mr. Moderator, in 2019 in November, town meeting, uh, voted and authorized us to proceed with both these parcels to, uh, move forward on them, and unfortunately, we were not able to move forward more swiftly because, uh, the ownership changed and the prior owner, uh, particularly of the bank parcel, was not interested in proceeding. We now have, uh, the potential for a little bit of a breakthrough to attempt to, uh, alleviate and improve the parking challenge we have downtown. If town meeting will, uh, allow us to, uh, to move forward on this on an experimental basis, come back to you, uh, if we want to go long-term, and that's the appeal that I'm making to, uh, town meeting. Uh, and, uh, we appreciate the consideration for that, that's why we're starting small and we're hoping to build upon it. Thank you.
Hey, IT, if you could bring over Mr. Dufresne? Okay, Andy, we, you've got a couple of devices, uh, on, so if you could just have the sound on one of them on, so we can hear you?
You don't, you don't have to go online.
Where am I going?
No, no, something's not happening on yours.
Andy, if you could, if you could just turn the volume down on the two devices that you're not speaking on? And make sure they're muted as well. There we go, you're good.
Hi Dad.
If I, if I may speak, uh, Mr. Moderator, uh, having been a member of, uh, town meeting and, uh, Precinct 2 for probably the last 50 or 60 years, I find it very difficult to understand how Article 14 is gonna be beneficial to the town of Falmouth with the exception of, uh, probably a small income, uh, for very valuable property. I do not believe the town should get involved, and of course, be, being a, a, a resident of Falmouth Heights, I am very concerned about the, uh, uh, public parking facility, uh, or paid parking facility at the corner of Springbars Road and Worcester Court. Right now, the transformation of the traffic, uh, in that entire area has raised considerably since I built my home there a number of years ago when it was a dead end. And I have supported, uh, the progressive growth, commercial growth on Worcester Court, even though I reluctantly have supported that kind of, uh, uh, expansion into what used to be a residential area. Uh, I would ask all the people in the town of Falmouth, vote no on this recommendation by, quote, the town manager or whoever is involved in, quote, entering leasing agreements for whatever purpose that the town would have in, uh, in going into this type of agreements with the, uh, owners of the property. I am not, and I ask my fellow town meeting members of over 50 years to support an indifferent opponent on this article when do we have a better explanation of the value, number one, to the residents of the area? Not only the people in town of Falmouth, but the immediate impact on people on, uh, Randolph Street, Worcester Court, and, uh, and the people in T-Ticket to make this type of leasing agreement available to people who own a piece of property, they bought it with the, with the understanding that it had a value, a value which I probably did not agree with at, at the time, but have been able to accept the, to the, some of the changes that are being proposed. I ask the people of the town of Falmouth, vote no on this recommendation.
Uh, next on my list is Ray Rowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ray Rowitz, Precinct 5. I was wondering if, uh, the parking lot at the Mullen Hall School was welcoming to, uh, Parkers during the summer while the school was not in session?
Do we have someone that wants to answer that question? School committee or school department or? Uh, IT, if you could bring over Kelly Welch, please, uh, or, or Ms. Door?
Uh, yes, as far as I know, that, uh, the parking lot is being used, um, during the summer, there's, there's usually cars parked, uh, both at Mullen Hall, uh, Lawrence School, um, there, uh, we're fine with the parking, um, being used, um, during the summertime. I don't know if Kelly has something else to, to add to that?
She's on her way over.
Okay.
I was wondering, that being said, uh, with, with the parking at the Lawrence School and the Mullen Hall School, why is there a need for more parking for Main Street?
Because there's more cars down there than there are spots, but, I mean, that's the short answer. Can we have Ms. Welch, she actually came over?
Yeah, I'm here, uh, Mr. Moderator, Kelly, Kelly Welch, Chair of the School Committee, I don't have anything to add, I actually tried to lower my hand, I think Dr. Door described it perfectly, we always welcome, um, use of the, of the grounds, the playground and the parking when school's not in session.
Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Paul Cap. Paul, if you have two devices there, could you, um, mute? Turn the volume down on the device you're not using, please?
I'm only using one device.
Okay, I don't, we're getting some kind of feedback, but go ahead.
Uh, it's probably my wife, she's two rooms away. Uh, I, a couple of things, I think Mr. Dufresne and Mr. Neto, Neto are both correct in their assessments. Uh, now, maybe I'm incorrect, but I was under the in, impression that Worcester Court was a potential site for, uh, Wendy's, uh, which would create jobs and would also add to our tax base. Yeah, I don't know if anybody has any answers to these things, but, uh, I, I would like some clarification on that.
Hey, I don't know, anybody have a, any comment on that? Mr. Suso?
My understanding is that project was withdrawn.
All right.
Anything else, Mr. Cap?
Uh, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Victoria Lowell. Go ahead, Ms. Lowell.
Okay, I don't see anything here, but, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can see you and hear you.
Oh, okay, I can't see you, so, I wanted to make a amendment to just include the art, the, a portion that's to do with the Catherine Lee Bates Road site, so I would strike the, the second parcel.
Okay, so, uh, you, as an amendment?
Yes. So, because, uh, the Martha's Vineyard, now Martha's Vineyard Bank site, it's already, uh, all made up for parking, and also, it's, it's, and it's, I used to be a customer of Bank of America, or all, I started out at Falmouth National Bank, that's how long I went to that site, and that area was almost never, uh, used during, uh, business hours, uh, at all, it's, it was excess parking. But with the prospect of Shiverick Pond improvements, and a really nice fishing and, uh, viewing platform, which will be more or less across the street from that parking area, I think it would be, uh, it will be well-used and, you know, would probably, might need some, make some steps down or some, an access that makes it attractive to get down from the parking lot to the, down to the road itself. Right now, it's a lot of vegetation along there, but I just think that one really makes sense, and it would be experimental and, and I would assume, I think we have to trust our management in s, in some regards, and that's not excessive amount of money, and they would try to get as good a bargain as they could for the town, but, um, Main Street, Main Street parking in the middle of summer is just, there's never any places, uh, I mean, that's, that's an overstatement, but it's, it's, it really is hard to find a space, even with the Mullen Hall, uh, school, that parking lot gets totally full too, so, I think this would be an enhancement, plus- Plus, with the Shiverick Pond, there's going to be a new sidewalk along the pond and some nice enhancements, and that will just spread out the parking a little more and make some more available. So I would just, that's why I would make that as a separate, just limit the motion to that section.
We have an amendment, but before we do that, we are at the witching hour of eleven o'clock, so we're going to have to take a vote. So by call of the chair, we will vote to extend after eleven. I'm hoping the members will do this so that we would not have to come back tomorrow night for one article. This is our last article, so if IT could put up a poll to extend past eleven o'clock. Here is the vote to continue past eleven o'clock. All those in favor? Vote yes, oppose no. Ms. Lowell, you won't be able to vote because you're on our side, so if you could just let me...
Well, I obviously want to get this article settled, so I vote yes.
Okay, so I'll add one to the result. Thank you. All those in favor of continuing past eleven, so we can finish this article? Vote yes, oppose no, and then hit submit. Last call on staying for this article. Okay, IT, if you could show me the results. By a count of vote of one hundred and sixty-five in favor and six opposed, we will continue after eleven o'clock. And we have an amendment on the floor, Ms. Lowell's amendment, which is to strike the language that references the Worcester Court parcel from the main motion. I have eleven people on my original list. If you're on my orig, if you were on the original list and your hand is still up, would you please hit the raise hand function to drop your hand down? Unless you want to speak on this amendment. I'm asking members to please recalibrate their raised hands and only have your hand raised at this point if you want to speak on this amendment. But I do have a list of eleven folks on the main motion that we will go back to after this. Okay, so everyone disappeared, and now I have two new ones. So, well, some of them are overlaps, but IT, if you could bring over Judy Fenwick, please.
I just wanted to add support for the amendment by bringing people's attention to Article fourteen map that is shown on page forty-nine of the warrant book. And this is Article fourteen, and it shows the site for the Catherine Lee Bates parking lot. So I would say vote yes on the amendment and limit it to that one site.
Okay, next on my list is Mr. Latimer. Okay, Mr. Latimer, if you could unmute? Mr. Latimer, you still have your mute function on your device? Richard, I've never heard you this quiet at a town meeting before. Could you please unmute? Okay, you're unmuted now. Let's see if we can hear you. Okay, Richard, there's something wrong with the microphone on your device. You are unmuted, but we cannot hear you. So again, I'm going to need you to call that phone number that I gave you earlier and try to speak with us through the phone line, because your microphone's not working. You're unmuted, but your microphone's not working. Okay, IT, next on my list is Grace Simpkins.
Hi, can you hear me? See me?
Yep.
Yeah. Grace Simpkins, Precinct Eight, and I apologize. I don't know that I've ever spoken at town meeting before. I just wanted a point of clarification. I think Mr. Sussa spoke to this, but is this, if I remember correctly, didn't we vote on the Springbys parcel before for affordable housing and parking to be associated with that? Is this the same parcel?
Ms. Braga?
I don't see Mr. Sussa on my screen, but no, we didn't. When we voted anything with this parcel, we, town meeting did vote to put the affordable housing development on that property that is next to the lot that we're talking about right now. The lot we're talking about right now is not leased. It's owned by a private individual. It was not part of that original disposition of that property. This is a completely separate lot.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No, it gets confusing. They're right next to each other. Good question.
Thank you.
Okay, IT, next on my list is Peter Clark.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Peter Clark, Precinct One. I was actually going to make the same amendment, so I support it fully. The Catherine Lee Bates lot is within walking distance of downtown. It's easily accessible in that downtown area. The other one appears to have traffic issues and certainly is much more distant from much of the shopping in downtown area without some supportive transportation. So I support the amendment, and I support the idea fully of allowing this exploration of leasing. We know that parking is a major issue, and I think we ought to take this one lot that is close to downtown and doesn't need supportive transportation. Thank you.
Okay, next on my list is Barbara Schneider.
I just would like to call the question on the amendment.
Okay, this is a motion to close discussion on the amendment. IT, could we put up a slide to move the question? Okay, all those in favor of closing discussion on the amendment signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. This is to close discussion on the amendment. All those in favor of closing discussion, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, last call for moving the question on the amendment. All those in favor, yes, oppose no, then hit submit. IT, if you could share the results. By a counted vote of one hundred and sixty-four in favor and three opposed, the question is closed on the amendment, and the question will now be on the amendment. This poll will be whether or not to remove the second parcel, the Worcester Court parcel, from the main motion. This is the amendment. IT, if you could put up a poll for the amendment.
Apologies, Mr. Moderator. You just wanted the vote to amend the article?
Yeah, this is just on the amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, vote to amend. All those in favor of dropping the second parcel signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, last call for the amendment to remove the second parcel. All those in favor of the removing of the second parcel signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no, then hit submit. Okay, IT, if you could share the results with us. By a count of vote of one hundred and forty-nine in favor and eighteen opposed, the amendment passes, and the second parcel is removed from the main motion. All right, I'm now going to go back to my original speaker's list on the main motion, but it is now the main motion as amended. John Nolan was next on my list.
Hello.
Hi, John. You're with us.
This is John Nolan, Precinct One. I just want to voice my support for anything that improves the parking in the downtown area. I think this is an experiment, but it's not a costly experiment, and we just have to see how it works out.
Okay, Dale Cap.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I should have taken my hand down after the amendment passed. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Let's see, next I have Peter Clark.
Moderator, Peter Clark, Precinct One. I made my pitch for the amendment, and I support the article as amended. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Gina Weber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was also going to suggest that exact same amendment, and as it has been amended, I am in full support of the article now.
Okay. Next I have Barbara Schneider.
I would just like to call the question. Barbara Schneider, Precinct Four.
Okay. We have a motion to call the question to end discussion on the main motion as amended. IT, if we could cue a slide for moving the question? Okay, this is to move the question on the main motion as amended to close discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. All those in favor of closing discussion, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Okay, IT, I think we can present this one. By a count of vote of one hundred and sixty-five in favor and three opposed, the previous question is moved, and now the final vote on this article will be to approve the article as amended. We've removed the second parcel, and this is to appropriate the $25,000 from Certified Free Cash for the parcel on Main Street. All those in favor of the main motion as amended will vote yes. All those opposed will vote no. IT, if we could cue a slide, please. Poll is up. All those in favor of the main motion as amended, vote yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. All those in favor of the main motion as amended signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Last call on the vote. Okay, IT, if you could present us with the results. By a counted vote of one hundred and forty-four in favor and twenty-two opposed, the main motion passes as amended. At this time, I'll recognize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen for the notification of the next annual town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The next annual town meeting will be November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, so we are required to have the notification of the next annual town meeting, which will be November fifteenth. Madam Chair, could you also share the date of our special town meeting to deal with all of the articles that we took no action on the consent calendar?
Well, I could, Mr. Moderator, if I could open up my calendar. Mr. Johnson-Staub, could you just remind us of the date?
June twenty-eighth.
Thank you. June twenty-eighth at, we're going to start at seven, excuse me, six PM with the hope of getting it all finished in one night. And that's going to be at Falmouth High School.
Okay, so our next meeting will be the special meeting at six o'clock, Monday, June twenty-eighth, at Falmouth High School. And we will make a final determination if it'll be inside or outside based on what's happening at that time, but it will be at the high school location. Then it will be those articles that we took no action on on the consent calendar. At this point, I call of the Chair, I'll ask for a vote to dissolve this meeting. So we need to dissolve this meeting so that we can spend the money and the budget. And then, that's why we have a separate special town meeting, and we didn't just adjourn this meeting until June. Also, we have an election coming up, and the nineteen thirty-five Special Act that created our town meeting does not allow me to adjourn a meeting over the election of town meeting members. So that's why we have to have a separate meeting, because some of our members may not seek reelection. We might have new members elected, and then they'll have a right to vote at the meeting in June. So IT, if you could please put up a slide for us to dissolve the town meeting. The slide is up. All town meeting members in favor of dissolving this meeting signify by voting yes. All those opposed, no. And then hit submit. All those in favor of dissolving the meeting, press yes. All those opposed, no, and then hit submit. Last call. Okay, IT, let's display the result on the dissolving of the meeting. By a count of vote of one hundred and fifty-four in favor and two opposed, I call this annual town meeting adjourned and dissolved. See you. The high school on June twenty-eighth.
Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community, and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
The attorneys at Oppenheim &amp; Nickerson, LLP, have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has in our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, Downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations: Grassi Septic Solutions.
Whole Health Company, LLC.
J. Miller Pictureframer. 681 Falmouth Road.
The Annie Hart Cool Team.
Dolpe Septic Plumbing. Residential, Commercial Pumping and Cleaning.
Village Lamp and Repair Shop.
Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum.
Lisa Peterson Azendorf. Kinland Grover Real Estate.
The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org.
Partners Technology. Voice and Data Solutions.
Wacoite Congregational Church.
Sora's Flower Garden Nursery.
M. Duffney Builders.
Danny's Barber Shop.
Carl F. Cabosa Excavating.
Paul's Precision Automotive Repair.
David Rogers Electric.
Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance.
The Davy Tree Expert Company.
Chapman Funerals and Cremations.
Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth.
Mahoney's Garden Center.
The Cape Cod Five.
Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank in Falmouth and Woods Hole.
And Steve's Pizzeria &amp; More.
Additional support provided by Stop &amp; Shop. Windfall.